You can bring in Q and A.
Call them everybody down.
There aren't really one in particular.
That's different.
It was a different sound, yeah.
Okay, we will call to order. Microphones aren't on.
You're on there.
We'll call to order the, uh... Two special meetings for the Shenandoah City Council Budget Workshop. This particular one Thursday, August 12th, 2021, 6:00 PM. Call to roll and notice that everybody is here. Item three is Citizens Forum. Don't we have anybody signed to speak? Do we, Courtney? No? Okay, then we will move... And I'm gonna do this a little bit out of order. Nat, we'll do item four first. Let's move right into item four, which is discussion regarding the 2021 property tax.
Mayor and Council, as we discussed last night, um... The... Sorry, I wasn't ready for this. I was ready for the other one. Okay, so...
Oh, did I miss?
Yeah, I'm so sorry. So, uh...
Yeah, I'm thinking about it. We probably need to do this before we leave.
Yeah, that's fine. So, um, as discussed last night, the no new revenue rate came at 1737. Our current tax rate is 1799 per hundred valuation. We did go with a vote last night to give the option to go above the no new revenue rate and below the voter approval rate. This is the actual items to discuss what rate we want to go with for the budget so that Courtney and I can get the postings for the public hearings set. On the itemized change sheet, as you see on the screen, and that was emailed to you guys earlier today, it shows you the difference between what would be collected with the two different rates if we currently say with the 1799 or if we opted to go with the no new revenue rate. So, um, it's a... It's a difference about $73,000. So, open for discussion or, um... It's not an official vote, it's just a consensus so that I can get the public hearings posted.
Do you know if the, uh... That NNR includes any inflation?
Um, I'm not... I don't believe so, but I can definitely double check with the...
So, it remains our... Our budget would remain flat even though I have to pay you all more money?
Uh, the rate, yeah. So, when they figure in your rate, it's based on the appraisal value, based on your debt service payments, and typically whatever your balance is in your debt service fund.
So, I would offer up the suggestion, and again, it's not official, it is a discussion only, but I would offer up the suggestion that we go with the no new revenue rate, and if by the time we get to the end of budget, there is a pressing item that we absolutely have to have some money for, we back into what we need. And that's the only reason why... I mean, obviously, if we're spending the residents' money, it should be for a particular reason, right? I mean, like, there's something pressing. If not, then I would hate to do it the other way around where it's like, oh, look at how much money we have, let's go spend it.
Yeah, fair enough. Whether we do the budget first or... Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, you know, that flat rate doesn't include increases in our labor costs, increases in our purchasing, whatever we have to buy. So, to realistically just stay flat is not realistic.
Yeah, with 3% is your average cost of living increase we're getting, yeah.
And we're looking at like, right now, this... Yeah, this year so far, I think 3.7, we're on a run.
So, like, you know, if we need it, we know it's obviously an option. Hopefully, we don't have to, but...
So, I guess we'll go through the agenda and we'll see where we're at, and then...
Yes.
Okay.
So, let's approach it as we're using the no new revenue rate. Use that for our revenue. If we get to the bottom and, you know, we've got some pressing items that we absolutely have to pay for, then we can back into what that rate should be.
That's a 3.5% difference.
Which is about what the call is.
Yeah, that's... I think that's what Ron's point was.
Yeah, it's like they don't factor that in. And the other part that I don't like about the formula that they're using is that I can control what my spending is to an extent here. I can't control what the appraisal board does. So, I'm not like, say, a county commissioner where it's like, yeah, okay, I can play with my rate because I know my appraisal district's gonna make up for me. We don't have any influence like that. I mean, you can see on the appraisal board, we have eight out of 4,300 votes, so we don't have any influence on that.
We are a unique city. We have the lowest property tax rate in the county, including cities and the actual county itself and the township. So, we are very unique on that aspect that we do have one of the lowest property taxes, well, the lowest in the county right now.
Yeah, and obviously, we want to keep that, keep that going forward and reduce costs as much as possible. But we don't want to get to the point where we're cutting critical services.
Absolutely.
To save a few pennies, so...
Agreed.
But I think it's a perfectly valid approach to plug that in and move forward.
So, I've already changed it, so we'll just go forward from now, and then everything's changed, so...
Okay, so then we will move to item seven. Number one, general fund, and I want to skip all the way down to police, Department 22.
Um, it's going to be in your budget books tab.
Eight.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Do you want me to go over the summary of changes, or do you want to just have an open Q and A session, Mayor?
Well, yeah, what I'd like to talk about is the pay scale.
Okay, so that's gonna be item number six. So, you want to go to six then?
Where is that?
Um, on the agenda, so it's not...
That is item six.
Item six, yeah, okay. So...
Just get back to six.
Chief Dunlap and his staff have worked on, um, police, an upgraded police payroll scale to reflect changes that would be appropriate to change to help bump up our patrol to get us where we need to be to competitively bring on new employees, recruitment, and also corrects this situation that we're having right now with promotions. It helps with a different flow from one scale to the other. And Chief Dunlap's here to explain that more if there's more questions about it.
So, Lisa's correcting the fact that we're trying to, um... Correct some issues that were... That we had from the previous scale, but also for retention as well as getting the starting pay up to be competitive with other agencies. As y'all know, we... We're... Nationally, we're having problems with law enforcement and recruiting, but being that our pay is lower than the average right now, we're having a lot of difficulties trying to recruit people. Our last hiring board, we had two recruits come in and only... Took both of them past, however, one of them has already withdrawn. So, we're down to one. The board before that, we only had one applicant come in, and they didn't pass the test, so it's a continued problem as compared to when we were at a higher rate, a higher average compared to all the other agencies, we would have 50, 60 applicants. But now, we're down to just one or two, and choose to scrape in the bottom of the barrel, so...
So, I, um... This... What's on the screen now will show you the comparisons to agencies around us. Yeah, other comparable agencies. It's broken out by recruit, officer, top... Starting to, um... And then they're top out, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, and assistant chief. If you look down at the bottom, you'll see that the differences in the averages versus Shenandoah just highlights what Chief Dunlap has noted as the motivation for this survey.
When's the last time we changed the scale?
I believe it was 2018.
It's been a while.
Right. So, I started working on the scale and in 2019, and just making adjustments. Every year, I would pull after October, of course, I would pull the other agencies' pay scales and do a comparison study, and that's where I came up with this. And the reason why these agencies were chosen, these agencies are agencies that are local to us, along with agencies that are, um... Close to where the academies are at. So, they get a first look at those agencies, and of course, those agencies in Harris County, they're a lot higher. West U, Webster, Sugar Land, Seabrook, those are... Pearland, of course, Pasadena. Those agencies are significantly higher than us, but that's... The academies are located in Houston area that have, um... That the... This is what they look at, and they know that those agencies are nearby where those academies are. But locally, I put all the local agencies around, and again, if you can see at the bottom, we're still... We're below the average. Our neighboring agency, Oak Ridge, they start out at 59, which that's... That hurts us. A lot of the not availables, they would just... When I would contact the agencies to ask them about their scale, they would just give me numbers, and some of them just would not provide me with, uh... They either didn't have those positions, or they just didn't provide... Wouldn't provide me with, um... Those numbers.
I think you've done a fantastic job of recruiting some of the entry-level people based on the lack of competitive rate, so I think you've done great on that, so good job there. But I did recall, looking across the board, that, yeah, our PD1 rate was low, comparison to everybody.
I mean, I think I can agree it's low. There's... I think there's some things that we talked... There's some agencies in here that I don't necessarily think, you know, we talked to... DPS is a very unique agency, and it's kind of like throwing FBI in there. It's kind of a... I understand we patrol some of the same area, but they're a statewide agency.
Right.
I'm not sure necessarily they're... We're low, I think definitely need to raise it up. You start looking at comparable, like Pasadena's a much different department, a much different patrol area, I think everyone would agree than in our town. But, yeah, we need to compare us to Oak Ridge, and that's who we're competing against.
Right.
People who want to be in Montgomery, Willis, and Magnolia, and Oak Ridge. That's the thing, the people that want to be in those environments are gonna be the same ones that want to be here.
Right.
So, we, you know, we definitely need to bump the salary. I'm not sure we're as far down as... As far away as we think we are, but I... We all agree that we should build it up.
Well, as you can see, the average, um... Agency was 60,803. I put it below that average at 57,690 because I felt that that was a fair price to start out at.
Now, again, I think you did great, you know, getting the recruits that you did, considering your predecessor told me that it was impossible to get anybody from out of an academy.
Right.
So, thank you for your diligence in doing that and saving us money that way.
Well, we do have, um, some cadets right out of the academy, but we have to make sure that we get a little bit of both.
You have to have a mixture, yeah.
Right, we have to get some seasoned veteran officers to come in as well to help mentor some of the younger, newer guys.
And then also, there's a third part that helps correct... This scale will help correct is the hiring, starting pay for... It establishes a range, so you'll see at the top there from one to three years. They come in at year one, four to six, they come at year two, the same equivalent of year two, seven plus, the same monetary mal... Year three, and that helps prevent, um... Bringing someone in higher than current staff, and it helps a progression plan.
It also helps us provide some years of service recognition because that's an area where we were deficient.
Exactly, so there's some agencies out there, local agencies, Montgomery County, offering lateral transfers for years of service. So, if you're a 12-year officer, then you're gonna come over as a 12-year officer at their department. So, that hurts us there as well. So, I created that scale in order to give a little bit of incentive. We can't do the year-for-year, but it would give us a little bit of incentive to bring in a veteran officer.
So, how do the other police agencies that you're comparing it, do they have the same? Is that the same with them, Troy? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, yes, sir, that's what they do. We get called all the time by agencies saying, hey, what y'all's... I'm doing a salary study, and what is y'all's salary? And I give them what our salary is, our pay scale is, and then they do a comprehensive study the same way. All agencies do the same.
So, that's... Not based on Shenandoah's years of service, but the officer's years of service within the...
Yes, sir. So, that starting scale is if you're... If you're being hired, that's a hiring scale. If you're being hired and you come over as a four- to six-year veteran, then you're gonna start out at step two. If you start out at one to three, of course, step one, and then seven plus would be step three.
And then you progress.
Once they get here, they... You start adding your...
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, right?
Right.
And you start moving up that step scale. Yes, also, I forgot to correct on this spreadsheet, but it's not years, it's steps.
It's steps, not years.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I saved it. Can be confusing, but it is steps.
Well, it was...
We do steps here, we don't do years.
Yes. That's all. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, how about... Other agencies? They're all gonna rate, get their own raises. I heard Noah was talking about the county getting raises.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and, uh... Are we still gonna be competitive, or are we just... Is the whole scale of everybody moving, and we're gonna have to do this again?
Well...
I'm not trying to...
No, that's... So, that's my suggestion. So, starting out at the 57, I think it's gonna put us in a very good position to be competitive. However, it definitely needs to be reevaluated every two to three years because I promise you, come October, this... Everybody else's scale is gonna...
Change.
Gonna change.
Yeah, inflation is already up 3.7 this year, and July was up 5.4.
Yes.
Actually spend three months in a row five or higher.
Right.
Then, yeah, it's...
And labor costs are actually higher than that.
Right. So...
Labor costs skyrocket if there's...
But also, if we reevaluate it every two, three years, what that does is that keeps us from having such a big sticker shock like now. It won't be near as much money, so...
We're having to make up for several years of being stagnant.
And across the board, we talked about, we kind of need to do this for all of our staff.
Absolutely.
Just to kind of keep the pulse of all of our, you know, of all of our staff and all of our positions, rather than doing these five-year and 10-year big studies and just all of a sudden, everybody's kind of freaking out about it, so...
Well, you're right, because it's difficult right now to hire a lot of positions, especially PD, but a lot of positions are scarce, you know, trying to find people.
I know, it's probably a discussion we probably ought to have sometime in the fall about how to do... How to do these kind of things, but just something to keep in mind from a long-term planning as we move forward. I think these are reasonable numbers.
Yeah, I think they're more than reasonable. I mean, we're actually still well below the average, and that's taking the high and the low out. And that's how I usually look at averages, throw the highest one out, throw the lowest one out, and average the rest of them, and we're still below that number. And unlike other positions, um... Just with the environment of policing, it's difficult one to find the... Difficult one just to find the recruit, but more so in that mix, find the right one that's gonna fit into our department and do things the way that Shenandoah does it, because it is different. Not every community focuses the way that we do it with our residents, and so, um... Nor do they police for, you know, 45,000 people a day on 3,800 residents. So, there's a lot of differences in our department. You know, when we were going through these numbers, that was the first thing that I asked you was, you know, I still see we're below the average. We're taking a hit any way that we look at it. The biggest thing is are we gonna be able to recruit the quality people that we need to? And while I admire the ability for us to be able to recruit somebody out of the academy, that's not a long-term solution for us. The other thing that we have to factor in that is that when we do recruit somebody out of the academy, they're not actually an extra police officer on the street, they're still in patrol car with another police officer, so that's for at least six months, and depend upon how they do, could be for as much as a year. So, we're paying extra for an officer to be on the street, but we're not getting patrol out of that officer while we're paying for them to be on the street and going through that training. Obviously, it pays off later, but it doesn't give us the initial bang for the buck in the beginning.
Yeah, a rate has to be able to retain people, so...
Absolutely.
You know, we get them, they're gonna be thankful that you hired them, that's a good thing, but it's like you don't want to lose them right away because our scale wasn't competitive then, so we would have done all that work ultimately for nothing, but in the long run, if we keep the scale competitive, then you're gonna keep those people longer term, and there's gonna be ones that you're gonna want to really retain. It's the same way with our tier of sergeants. Like, okay, you want them to be happy and comfortable, I wouldn't, you know, they're loyal and they've been here for a while, but you don't want to take it for granted that they're going to do that, or that your scale tells them to take a look someplace else. Got good people, I like to keep them.
With that in mind, I would want to see that suggested salary, 57,690, maybe make that, bump it up a little more to attract those experienced officers from other departments, perhaps. You know, just broaden that net.
That's what that scale does.
That's the scale. By year two, they're 59, and year three, they're 61. I think the scale that she was presented is pretty solid.
And scaled, yeah.
So, when you start out at seven-plus years of experience, you will be starting out at 61 versus...
That would encourage lateral transfer.
And some kind of incentive as well, you know, add some kind of incentive for attracting those experienced officers, not just the recruits.
Yeah, one of the suggestions that we may want to consider is that when we're competing for an officer, or we're competing for an experienced officer coming over, where our pay structure may be a little bit less in the beginning, I think, you know, we may want to consider, so we don't have to change the whole scale, because that was one of the things I asked you, is show me the numbers if we were started at average with everybody else and worked up.
Right.
And of course, those numbers are, you know, another hundred, another 90-some-thousand on top of this number, so... One of the thoughts that I had was that maybe we can even consider an incentive or a bonus, signing bonus and bringing somebody on the first year.
That's what I was referring to.
That has the experience, and then that way, there... We're not stepped all the way out, all the way through, but allows us to recruit that person, bring them on and get them into the department, and moving things forward. Again, it's just the environment that we're faced with today.
Right.
Unfortunately, in policing, but, you know, I'd hate to lose a good quality person because, you know, we're a few thousand dollars short. So, I would even, you know, want us to consider something of that nature to incentivize, again, that officer that has the experience to make a transition home. I don't think most of the... I mean, I think benefits are important, but that's not the... If you don't have them, it's a deal breaker. If you have them, it doesn't necessarily make it the deal because, again, they're looking at dollars in your pocket, and if the officer gets hurt on the job, he's gonna get workers' comp anyway. So, while, you know, our younger officers that are unmarried, you know, probably like me, they never go to the doctor, and, you know, it's great to have, but, you know, I'd rather have the money. But our younger family officers that have a wife and kids, then that kind of changes the deal a little bit because, you know, mom's gonna take the kids to the doctor, the dentist, and all that good stuff, so those benefits really begin to make a difference. But initially, it's, what am I gonna make coming in now?
So, what's the bottom line of... What's the bottom line of the scale? Let's get to the bottom.
If we were to adopt the scale as presented, how would that change our proposed budget?
So, um... So, you already have the base salary, current salary already in the budget, so...
I'm just gonna put a delta in there.
Yeah, the additional with taxes and retirement would be about $258,698.
It was a total of $3,506,920.
So, if I add that, and I can do it real quick.
Yeah, please do.
But let's assume we had, you know, as presented.
I don't want to mess up my formulas, sorry.
Wrong box.
And not bad three...
Huh?
You're in the revenue box. You're in revenue.
Oh, man. Sorry. It's all trying to blend together. You've been looking at it. I know, I've been looking at it.
We're gonna make $250,000 off of it.
You're not on your big... Your multi-monitor is at your desk.
I know. Next year, I want two monitors, Chris.
Chris, two monitors next year. Chop, chop.
I can't even do my, like, cheats. Oops, sorry. Oh, my gosh.
Glad I can't see them.
Sorry. There you go.
Take your time. Take your time.
So...
No pressure.
It would bring your net surplus down to about $14,000. And that's including the 1737 tax rate difference as well.
So, the scale increase works out to be what percentage increase over last year?
For salaries?
Yeah, for the 258 represents what percentage increase in pay?
I believe it was 11% when I did the number the one time. I think it was 11.
Troy, did you do that number?
I was like, oh.
I thought it was like an average to the 7%.
What the average percentage increase is for...
No, I didn't do that.
Oh, per...
You should have it on that previous form.
Existing salary scale or proposed, is that what you're...
Yeah, I thought I did. This should go to do it quick.
This keeps freezing, I'm sorry. I think I had 11%, because I had it.
And that's the fully loaded number, right? Like, with all the...
Retirement.
Your increase in your retirement increases.
Mm-hmm, and taxes. Yeah, I believe it's... Oh, my thing's frozen now, I'm sorry. Okay, there we go.
So, if I'm not mistaken, isn't PD part of what NDD can pay for?
So, from my discussions with Bill on Wednesday, it has to be very specific. Like, they cover some holiday patrol over there, but it's... When they code it, it's a special code they code saying they're over there. You know what I'm saying? It can't just be general, it has to be very specific to influence commercial.
So, how do they pay for a fire department?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure. Yeah.
Are they not also first responder?
Not sure. That's been in place for a long time, so.
Well, I understand that, but just because it's in place for a long time doesn't mean we can't question.
I also
I understand that it's been in place for a long time, but I mean, specifically, if we're already paying overtime, I don't see
I guess my point was not that we can't look into changing it, but we're not sure the rationale that went into it to be going. Yeah. Another question that came up in our meetings a few weeks ago was whether or not CBB funds can offset any of this, and I spoke with an attorney with TML, and he said absolutely not.
Now, for making the change here, we're responsible for it, so.
So can you give me two numbers then? So what's the total comp that we're proposing? Do you know that number? Have you had that?
The total personnel services for the PD?
For PD? If we were to include this?
Include that two million, nine-hundred-and-fifteen thousand.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Two million, nine hundred
Nine fifteen, nine twenty-two.
Nine fifteen, nine twenty-two. And what is it? What would it be if we did not include this?
Two-point-three. Two-point-three-five.
Two-three-five what?
Two-point-three-five zero-four-seven.
Yeah, the other numbers
What'd you say the proposed? What's your?
The proposed is two-six-zero-nine.
Personnel services.
I'm looking for the exact number.
Sorry, I'm just trying to do the percentage change.
Are you just doing percentage change?
Yeah, because I can do that right now.
Two-six-zero-nine, one-sixty-three?
It's eleven, right?
Eleven-one-zero-one.
This is what it currently is.
Almost one, that's almost twelve percent.
Here's a change.
So we're not I just didn't do it first.
Eleven-on-one. That's a percent change from this number to this number.
So my number?
No, your number's right.
Because I think patrol and sergeants were higher than the lieutenant.
What was the question? I'm sorry.
So the biggest shift is gonna be in patrol and sergeants.
Yes.
Those are bigger than your lieutenant.
Mostly PD one, I thought.
Yeah, because it's your
Yes.
Yeah, PD one, yeah.
So how I did it is, I gave the patrol, starting out at two-point-nine-nine percent to get my first number, and then I did a flat number. I got that number, which was seventeen-twenty-five, I believe.
Yep.
And then that number went straight across every year.
Gotcha.
So the next PD two would be two-point-nine-eight, I believe.
It might be rounded here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and then I decreased as I went up the scale.
We've been deferring this for a while.
Yes, I started working on this scale in 2019, and just kept redoing it every year.
And the environment we're in isn't helping either.
No.
I'd like to know going forward, and this is just off the cuff, but what is the perception of a police officer from a different department of what our department is? And that's, you're just gonna have to ask them, okay?
Right.
Because everyone's gonna have their own opinion, that's all.
Right.
But there's gotta be something besides just a monetary number that's also hurting us, and that's what I'm looking for.
As far as recruitment and what's hurting us besides the monetary number?
Their perception of Shenandoah.
So this is gonna be our biggest thing by far. But you also have to establish leadership as well, your reputation within the other agencies. Our agency is starting to develop a very good working relationship with the other agencies. Montgomery County, Precinct Three, Oak Ridge. I've been meeting with the heads of those departments as well. I've talked to Jeff Christie from Conroe. So the working relationships are building more now, and you're gonna see an increase of county units and Precinct Three units coming by and checking by with our guys on traffic stops, checking by with calls. So you're gonna see an increase of that as well because of the working relationship as built up.
I like the engagement that you've been having with these other agencies as well.
Yeah, it's real positive to see them responding to our calls and engaging with our officers. You can see that in traffic stops.
Right.
I think that's a very positive thing to see them interacting with us.
I agree with you.
Absolutely, and that's part of it. And then your agency, you know, us putting it out there on Facebook, it hurts us and it helps us at the same time. I knew that going into it. However, it helps us a lot as far as recruitment, because police officers, they want to see action. So when you put that stuff out there, they start seeing stuff that we're doing, and they say, hey, I want to go to that agency. So they see that we're doing good stuff, and they like it. Our reputation with other agencies, that's huge. And then them knowing that they have a leadership that supports them and is a positive environment for them to work in.
I mean, this is the same scale that you went over with groups of us, you know, some individually and some in groups of two. And so you've heard any objections that we've had, and you're standing on this, and so that's fine.
I think in principle, we agree with the scale. It's time to move on and see where the rest of the budget sits.
Yep.
See if we can pull it off.
I think that the reality is, is wherever we're at today is probably gonna be much different next year.
I agree.
You know, I mean, even in this scale.
Well, that's fine.
You know.
That's what I'm saying.
That's just the environment that we're I mean, unfortunately, right now that we're in, across the board, and not just the police department, but really all departments, and labor, and labor costs.
And that's one of the reasons, if you go back to the tax rate or the NNR rate, you know, why
Oh, that's flat, but nothing else is, and the world has changed, hasn't it?
So I think we're all in agreement to, Lisa, to go ahead and put it in.
Yes.
I will say that this puts a little pressure on the leadership of the police department now, because if this is what we need to produce results when it comes to hiring and building our force, then
I think Troy knows he owns it.
That's right. This is a lot of money the residents are spending to solve a problem that we need to get solved.
Right. But it's also, it's not just the hiring. It's also retention of the officers.
But have we had a real issue with that? I mean, I understand we don't want to have an issue with it.
No, we don't want to have an issue, but if it continues and we continue to fall flat, we're gonna have an issue because Montgomery County, with their five percent increase and their lateral, I've been hearing mumblings about, man, I can go over there and I can make X amount of money.
And they do talk.
That's exactly
Yes, so we're having, you know, you're gonna have that. And also, if the Woodlands incorporates into a city, that's gonna be a huge competitor for us, and that's gonna put us in a totally different spectrum, so.
You're ways off from that, and I'm curious to see what kind of services they can provide once they do that, so it's a whole nother topic of conversation.
Yeah, it's always a topic, but
I will say that I think that if we're able to keep this in the budget, which hopefully we will, and once we roll this out, this is a perfect opportunity as we're telling them about their new pay increase, that we can also remind them that we expect them to be backed up on code enforcement. It's a good opportunity to say, hey, we're increasing the pay scale. Here are a few things we're gonna ask you to pitch in and do too.
Oh, absolutely, and they'll do it if I ask them to do it, so.
I know they will.
They, we've already had the discussion, so.
I'd just like to be able to give them a little something for it.
Yeah.
Okay. So then with that, let's move back up to item five. Discussion and possible action regarding the 2019-2020 general fund budget surplus.
Mayor and council last year, we established a general fund reserve, it's actual own fund, and and currently, we housed the one-hundred-and-eighty-day requirement reserve in that fund. Currently, there's about four-point-seven million dollars in that fund. So going forward with this item, the idea was to take the budget surplus from the audit and then to either allocate it towards that one-hundred-and-eighty-day reserve fund. Obviously, every year we advance, there's gonna be, it's gonna go up and up and up, because your expenses are going up. Or, and if there's any excess, we could put it towards a project, or we could put it towards a capital project fund, or, you know, put it towards something that we need, that we just don't have the surplus this year for. So of the 2019-2020 budget surplus was about four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. And then with the current proposed expenditures, that's not including any changes, and now the new salary, we're at about ten-point-one. The daily expenditure cost is about twenty-eight thousand, so that would bring that one-hundred-and-eighty-day requirement to five-point, almost five million dollars. That number's gonna change. So tonight, I don't suggest doing any action until we finalize budget numbers, and then I'll bring it back to the August 25th meeting, and we can establish what we want to do after I put the requirement for the one-hundred-and-eighty days, if there's some excess.
So one of the reasons I wanted to do this was to sort of separate out the idea of our savings account, our emergency fund, and our cash account, you know, as opposed to there was some calling things reserves versus surplus, and so but you gotta wait for the whole year to cycle out before you can see that. Last year, we had a considerable amount of money from the eighteen-nineteen budget, so nineteen-twenty leaves us with four-twenty. If we didn't change anything, we would have to spend, take about half of that to meet our
The one-eighty, yes.
The one-eighty.
Probably a little bit more. You would only have, because it's four-point-six minus, you would only have a little bit left.
It'd be five million minus the four-point-six is what we need, which is pretty close to the four-twenty.
Yeah.
We just about need to take the whole thing. Not quite.
Oh, gosh.
About three-twenty of it.
Four, yeah, you're right, yeah, close to that.
Yeah, so we only have about, we only have about a hundred thousand.
And we're gonna eat that, we're gonna eat a bunch of that. I guess my suggestion with this, I know we're a discussion, is what you bring back to August 25th is to use all of that money to fund the one-hundred-and-eighty days, and on August 25th, come back and say, you know, you have another thirty thousand, if you can do something.
Yeah, congratulations.
Congratulations, you got thirty thousand.
So, but even looking at the current cash balance, less that four-point-six, we do have a current cash balance in the unallocated reserves. Available cash is probably a better term to use, about two-point-eight. So if there are some projects that need to be done this year, we do have that amount that is available. I spoke to the auditors. Typically, you don't want to supplement your operating with your reserves, but capital's fine.
So if there's some capital projects that we can't
With the surplus being at fourteen thousand at this point.
Particularly because we're gonna take care of our police officers.
Yeah.
We do have
About two-point-eight.
Two-point-eight million dollars unallocated. I'm just gonna kind of assume that that nineteen-twenty's gonna go
Yeah, pretty much.
So we have, not that we're gonna spend all of it or any, you know, but we do have some things that I think are high priority. But we do have some unallocated, two-point-eight million unallocated, that's available for some capital projects, so. Appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah, you're good. So that's pretty much, there's no action on this item. I don't, you know, I don't suggest we make an action at this point. We'll bring it back to the 25th meeting after we finalize everything else, and we'll just have an action on that.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So then nobody, I'm assuming, wants to make a motion? Okay. It's, I'm just making sure, since it's discussion and possible action, but if anybody wanted to make a motion, they could. I think we're all on the same page, and no one's going to make a motion.
Yeah. I dropped the gun on that one, sorry.
Let's move to item.
This is what we
Yeah.
This is perfect, so.
So we'll move to item seven, and Lisa, I'll let you drive. You just tell me
Okay.
how you want to go over these.
So I think we've discussed enough of the individual departments in the meetings, and that's the idea, is to get that out of the way, because a lot of it's routine. It's not anything, anything big is gonna be a capital, or it's gonna be broken out like a, you know, payroll scale. So I do have the itemized changes for general fund currently on the screen. These were some of the expenses that were true-ups, and also some minor requests from council members. If there's any questions on any of these, let me know. But there's not a whole lot of change.
You can probably hide column C.
Oops, yeah. That's just for my reference. I remember where to put it. Okay, there you go.
So what's the increase in transfer to debt service?
So basically, what we do currently is we do a forty-five, fifty-five percent split on the actual tax rate. So fifty-five percent of that seventeen-three-seven will go towards debt service, and the forty-five percent will go to general fund. The reason we do that is because general fund is considered MNO property tax, and your debt services are interest and sinking. So MNO can supplement INS, but INS cannot put back to MNO. So I would never want to run into a situation that something happens, we refund debt mid-year, and I have three-hundred thousand just sitting in INS that I can't put back to MNO. So I do it that way, so that we keep a good portion, and then the transfer to debt service is just the balance I need to cover. If that makes sense. Yeah. And I think we can refund this upcoming year, so.
Probably within the course of two
Yes, I think we are. It's either this year or next year. We've always just in the forty-five, fifty-five split, because it just makes it easier in case a situation like that does happen. There's so many fund rolls with debt service. So I did change that base with the seventeen-three-seven already, because the revenue will go down on debt service as well, and I have to put more in, yeah. So if there's any other questions on that, I'm just gonna list down off of this list on item seven, if there is any other questions. So general fund revenue, I did, as you'll see, I did increase sales tax. We've had enormous growth with sales tax. And also, I got my mixed beverage revenue information from the comptroller, and we're seeing a very good growth with that as well. I did, used to do the property tax difference. With the new online reservation system for pool and park, we're seeing a lot of reservations, so I've increased the revenues for that as well, based on what's going on right now. And that's about it for revenue.
We've had a lot of non-residents this year.
So this, yeah, we offer a discounted rate to the Sharks members for non-resident memberships, and that's a lot of it.
Yeah, we did, the Sharks did a big push this year to go ahead and get everybody registered.
Yeah.
And that was really helpful. It was helpful. I appreciate Chris and Joseph set up the computers at the pool. Really was super helpful to get that done.
Yes.
What was our increase over last year as far as reservation?
I don't know the total amount, but it's a lot. Yeah, even park, there's a lot.
The portals made it a lot easier for people to make that reservation.
Good job, Chris.
Well, it was a little bit of a mixed bag going into it, but
Yeah.
I'm just curious if that
I can get you this number tomorrow.
That was actually a driver behind revenue.
I think it is, yeah. Especially for the pools, yeah. Swim lessons, I've never seen that many swim lessons. Yeah.
It's amazing when a year with no
Activity, yeah. Yeah.
I know our pool was open, but people really
Yeah. So if there's any, also, just to note, revenue numbers for general fund will also change based on water sewer and CBB contribute percentages of admin and finance, and so there'll be some changes there as well. So the revenues will go up just minimally, but a little bit for those. And I'll have those final numbers by tomorrow. So moving on to administration, the only thing that I think I've changed since the initial discussions was the we added some training, citywide public speaking training, and then we also increased the elections cost, primarily because this year the elections cost, primarily because this year, we saw if we don't have a joint election with someone else, it's a little bit more money. And unfortunately, we can't anticipate who's gonna have an election whenever, so. So those were the changes for administration.
I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah. Any questions on administration? Moving on to finance, there was just some minor changes with travel and training. And I removed the bank fees. We are going out for RFA, hopefully October, and we'll have that all switched over. Any questions on finance? Moving on to community outreach, there wasn't any suggested changes. That remained the same from what was presented in the budget books. Any changes, any questions on community outreach?
Check.
Okay. Non-department, there was a change to the medical group insurance. You'll see that in here. We had a 12.8% increase. And then the change from the transfer to debt service. I think those are the only two changes from what was presented in the book. Yes. Any questions on non-department? Okay. Onto fire services. I did get a call from Chief Buck today. We, me and Kathy will be, they, they liked our proposal. We're going to meet with them hopefully in September. Our contract's until January 30, I mean, December 31st. So the placeholder I have in there is plenty enough, and then there often might be some difference in funding that I could bring back in. So hopefully, we'll have those numbers and contracts lined out, I'm hoping by the end of September. Bill will be in those meetings as well. Any questions on fire services?
Any confidence factor in that number sticking, or?
It's gonna go down.
Nothing that you, nothing you can say?
It'll go down a little bit. Because currently, we're at, we're already in the nines as it is. So.
Very good.
Yeah.
And just, just so you're aware, some of you are, we spent several months looking into the best fit for the city, and we still recommend the Woodlands.
Yeah, you talked to several agencies, yeah.
Yes, sir. And we even looked at the idea of forming our own, and it was a, a big number, so. We're looking at, without, without personnel costs, and just a department that meets standards, it would be between $2.5 to $3 million. So this is not a Class A, this is not a station on the east side or anything like that. It's meeting standards, and we also want to preserve our ISO rating. So that was a key factor in talking to, you know, looking to other options.
And then did we figure out what an annual operating cost for that would be after that? Like what the yearly? I mean, obviously, there's an initial startup. What would that annual operating cost be after that?
I don't have that right in front of me here, but I would have to, the, the problem with personnel costs is, you know, exactly the staffing that we would need, all the training, all the equipment, the gear, the, you know, whatever goes into that personnel cost. So I can look into that for you, just for future reference if you'd like.
I just think one day, there's gonna, I mean, maybe, not today, obviously, not by December 31st, and maybe not in the next five years, but, but at some point, that scale might tip. So I think it's, I think it is. And if you take that, let's say, you know, let's say there's a savings of, you know, I'm just making a number up here, say there's a savings of $250,000 a year, operating cost, then how many years does it take to make up that initial investment? And so at some point, it might make sense to say, okay, if we think what the next 20 years is gonna look like as a projection, it makes more sense to do this now.
And I think you're right.
Those are all what-if numbers, we just.
For the foreseeable future, this is the best thing that, that might change.
Yeah. I, I think it's a, I think it's just good to have that on everybody's radar, so you know when that tipping point is.
Okay. Any other questions for fire?
Nope.
Okay, moving on to emergency management, there's no change. There's really not that much in there.
I thought you raised something because of COVID or the ongoing COVID.
We did, when we went into the initial budget.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. So, but there's been no changes since then.
Okay, very good.
Police department would be the next department. Obviously, the salary changes will be reflected. There's also some added travel and training for the chief. And then there is an ad for, a minor ad for professional services to help them with some recruiting, to help produce a video and some other media.
Good idea.
Any other questions on police? Okay, so moving on to municipal court, no changes since the original, what was presented to you in the budget book. Any other questions on court? I know.
No, other
These small departments.
No, I know, other than, other than I have, I had highlighted before, the, the fees for credit card usage that we may or may not wish to revisit after we get through.
Yeah, and we'll review, after we go out for Megan RFA, we can always revisit some of that, so those items, when we have a better idea of what's out there. Moving on to public works, there was no changes to the budget that was presented. Any questions on public works? No. As discussed, we just discussed all these departments last night.
Yeah.
Pool, just for the record, there was some minor changes, actually, some significant changes to remove in salt cell system expenses and replacing it with just the chlorine chemical increase. And that was discussed last night, and that's noted on the itemized changes. And there's no other change, there's, there's been no other development since then. We're good to move on. Next department's parks, same thing, no changes. That was discussed last night. Community development would be next. Also, no changes since the proposed budget.
Oh, just going back to parks, so under the turf management, that includes that when land care puts a rut in, you think they'll fix the ruts, I'm assuming, right? So.
I make land care fix their own ruts.
Yep.
We use that turf management for insecticides or extra fertilization that we need.
Any other questions for parks or community development? Moving on to technology, also no changes since the presented budget.
Is like a second monitor for budget workshop for you and?
I don't know, is it Chris?
No, no, they have to buy their own monitors. It increases the base, they have to buy. They know the drill.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself, okay.
Okay, any other questions for technology? No? Okay. So the next, the next fund is CBB. John Maynor has worked awesomely to get me the closest numbers that we can get at this point from the strategic plan and projects that he's trying to narrow down and initiate in the new year. As you know, tourism was hit pretty hard during COVID. So last year, John did a good job at scaling back some of our expenditures because there just wasn't the travel to advertise for. So I have not, I didn't send you this most updated one because I just got it done before we went to this meeting. But as you'll see, there's some minor changes, and most of it's gonna be to his advertising. And it is primarily as a result of the strategic plan that they have developed with clarity of place. We don't have, and you'll notice it's on this one right here, we don't have exact program names at this point, but we're very confident in that number right now. He's still working out, and we're still trying to figure out what's the best fit for that. You'll do see there's some minor changes and, that put money back into the budget. They removed trips to discover advertising, and then Live Nation digital campaign. And then we just increased some of the other project, other expenses, I mean, other advertising expenses, I'm so sorry.
We're gonna start seeing some, continuing to see the, the good reports on
Yes.
impacts and like, you know, when I do this, this particular, I do this advertising, and I see this change, and I do this advertising, and I see this change.
Yes. And so, as, as of today, Kathy and I had a call, and she, I've been trying to keep her abreast of kind of, as we move towards getting to a new dashboard and a new monthly report. And I've been working diligently with our vendors as we've kind of gone through this year, because we've had to do, obviously, living through the year that we've lived through. It's required a lot of management, so monthly meetings, trying to track and see where are we adjusting spend as appropriately and needed. So I'm, I'm feeling like we're gonna be, we're about two and a half months out from us, because we have our one-month lag in reporting, where I'll be able to show you the results of this year, and they've been really, I'm pretty proud of them. So given the challenges that we've had and what we've been able to produce, I think that'll be something that you'll, we'll see. And I think the additions, a lot of tweaking has been going on, a lot of things in our space, obviously, given the year that Lisa said we've had. I think that transparency, and trying to have those available so you can see.
And that's what we, we've wanted to show council, and we're working toward that more and more, is, is results and data and, you know, real numbers, real, real momentum, real things that are working and achieving what we're wanting to do.
In the years past, we kind of threw a bunch of money at the wall and hopes and stuff.
Right.
And a lot of this, just to let you know, a lot of the shift over this past year in adjusting, there are certain things which are, are things like givens and that we need to do, that we can't necessarily track, whether it's doing the state travel guide, or important partnerships getting to like the Around Houston Regional Corporate Program that we joined this year and got in. Those are things we need to have a place at the table and to be there and do that. But can I ever say to you, oh, well, because we did that, we got X number of rooms are gone? No. But a lot of the other programs that we've done in the enhanced reporting that we have, to Kathy's point, what we're, what you're asking for, we can show a direct, concrete, actual, not some pie in the sky approximation.
Good.
Yep. So this is pretty much it. It still keeps them within their surplus amount. So, and, and just to note, any of these that, when we finally get final numbers for any of these programs, if they do exceed the 15,000 of Kathy's, they will be coming for you for approval, because they're not explicitly listed in the budget. Any other questions on CBB at this point?
I like how you said they'll be coming for you.
Well, I mean, it's coming to you.
How are we, how are we looking at for Kathy? We've been talking about doing some remodeling in that area to make it more inviting and more useful. I know everything kind of went great screeching COVID. Are we, are we still considering that?
We actually budgeted in the current year for that.
I have the money still allocated.
Have we gotten more, that's still, we're still like in the very early planning stages?
Um, I think it was just to see what was gonna go on with tourism, I think, at that point. And then also, if there was an option of them maybe going over on the east side somewhere and renting, so we were working out that idea, but we can all
That's what I was trying to see, have, have y'all made a decision?
Yeah, we, we probably need to finalize those plans and we'll put it as a priority.
Kind of a placeholder.
Right, well, and also to see what, what staffing is gonna look like, because we know we need to add a position. John needs some help, but we, we're, we're not quite sure yet what that position's gonna include.
Okay, that's fine, that's fair enough. I just was, you know, like I said, we had this placeholder last year, we didn't really go into that, we kind of added it again, and like, okay, we're gonna do something with it, okay. And this, this year with construction may not be the right tend to do.
And that's, that's another, that's another fair point, just saying.
It really is. And, and, you know, a quick splash of paint, a few couches may be the way to go at this point as opposed to a full-scale remodel. But, yeah. I just wanted to see where we were. Are we making progress, or we just keep carrying this along?
We're kind of interested. On hold for a little bit here, but we haven't forgotten about it.
Okay.
Mike, can you take your microphone? Just tap on it. Hit it, pretty good. Okay, thank you. Pretty good.
Any other questions for CBB? They'll move us on to
Actually, since you brought it up, that's the first that I've heard of it, that you were considering writing space on the east side?
That was a discussion during last budget workshop. We were looking at the pros and cons. We were, we did approach Sam Moon with our current center. The numbers weren't there.
They had interest in a police presence over there.
Yeah.
Some, some lease space, where a small amount of space for a police presence, and we thought, well, maybe we can include CBB in that, maybe right in that hub of activity, but as Lisa said, the numbers just weren't jiving.
Yeah. And also, we just didn't know where, what CBB was progressing to at that point. We're still waiting for the strategic plan, and also that. So any other questions, CBB? Moving on to Fund 600, it's water sewer. As discussed last night, I did relook at the revenue rates, and I did make some small changes. I wish it didn't rain as much this year, but it did. So it just lowered down revenues about $278,000. Also, this was the first year with the new rate increase, so because of how water sewer revenues run, they're on a tier system, and it's commercial and residential have different, different rates. It's really hard to pinpoint based on usage because of the different tiers trigger different numbers. So I tried to do it based on a dollar average rather than the pump it. I look at pumpage as well, but, you know, sometimes it's hard to even use that number. And then what I had done was use the previous year's numbers, and with the new rate increase, but it, it was still a little high, so I've corrected that.
So this 3.2 million that we have in our book, you're saying is, is actually, we're $276,000, in the case of work. We're just under 3 million in revenue.
Yes. And that's just because of the, unfortunately, we've had a very wet summer. And a lot, also, I couldn't even use last year's numbers, I used the year before because of COVID, a lot of our businesses were closed for a couple of months, so you're missing major pumpage there as well. Going to revenue, I mean, expenses, nothing has changed since the discussion last night. Everything is still the same. So it just brings down your near, your surplus to about 764, and that's before projects. Any questions?
I heard we're running out of water.
We've got plenty of water. We've got plenty of water.
Any questions on water sewer?
Can you go back up to the revenues of the lake of water?
Nope.
Okay.
So our, our lone star groundwater conservation, that's a straight pass-through?
That's correct.
That's going away, isn't it?
No, we, uh-uh. We lowered the one rate to we lowered the groundwater reduction plan fee to make up for the increase in the lone water, lone star last year. Typically, the groundwater is a direct cost, but I still, what Joseph has as the expenditure sometimes doesn't jive with what I do with revenues, just because, you know, he has an expense put in, but I do mine based on just a percentage.
But we, we budget as a direct, it's a direct pass-through.
Yeah.
We don't tack anything on to lone star groundwater conservation, it's forever.
So that's the, we're using the historical numbers on water revenue, but with the new rates. And so does that account for any development that we had, that we had come on board since those historical numbers?
So what I do is I take historical numbers, and I take the current numbers for the past six months, because it gives you a more true average because it's your higher usage months. And that's, and I, I don't have my, it's all on my desk, but I, you know, I play with, the problem is, is the tier system really is hard to anticipate. It just, it's hard. And most of the new, and, and to be completely honest with you, the, the residential doesn't yield as much as the commercial yields. And the commercial has higher rate, they, they tend to, you know, their sewer doesn't, it goes with them, you know, residential sewer taps out. Also, there's different meter sizes and different businesses with different rates and
The other thing that's gonna come, Ted pointed this out last night, is the fact
The other thing that's going to come, Ted pointed this out last night, is the fact we moved impact fees.
Yes. So I did reduce the tap fee revenue.
But then we're going to have, then we have impact fee revenue.
Yeah. The only problem is that's, I have no idea how to budget for that. Unfortunately, I'm so sorry.
I know. I'm just pointing it out that this is going to be a little, this year is going to be a little wonky.
Well, you could kind of gauge by what's coming through P and Z and council, what's on the horizon. But, you know, but I mean, those projects are, you know, six or eight months lead time. But like, for instance, a lifetime, we know that's not going to, we know that's not going to be around until, what, summer of '23. So.
We'd love to have impact fees and others that are in the pipeline.
So we really.
Just shocked that we're $278,000 off in revenue after we increased our water rates and we're still.
That's less than the initial projection, right? That was, that's the decrease.
Yes.
Yeah. Right.
So.
But we're still up $780,000.
I can look at it again and I have no problem. I was hoping I would have the August bill in post, but it has not, like, they're still, it'll get posted on Tuesday. So I can always bring it back. It's no problem.
Okay.
Maybe I need to say that part again.
No.
We're still up $780,000.
I'm talking about revenue over revenue. We increase our rates and our revenue drops. You know.
Well, the revenue that I anticipated for this year is not coming in where it needs to be. That's what, you know what I'm saying?
Revenue across the board didn't drop.
Revenue last year versus revenue this year, proposed revenue.
We're still up $780,000 considering.
But that's anticipated.
It's anticipated. So anything can happen with water sewer, unfortunately, you know.
It depends on the year, how dry it is, how wet it is.
No. It's just, it's hard and, you know, I could just leave them as they are and hope for the best, but I want it to be a little bit more conservative. But it's either, you know.
I think at this, I mean, this is what we were pointing out, I think at this year, we've done about as good as we're going to do with the transition and then we'll take a, you know, it may be one of these we have to update again just because of what's going on.
Yeah, and the good thing about, you know, budget, we can always bring back revenues as amendments as well. So if I see it trending up, I can always bring back and say, hey, guys, we're coming in more than we thought. And we can reevaluate and maybe there's a project sitting there that we can go, hey, let's do the project now, you know.
We've certainly got some on the list here.
Yeah. Yeah. It's just very hard. I see sales tax is hard and then again to water sewer revenue, I'm like, this is even worse, you know, because these sales tax has trends. Water sewer, it just takes a rainy month and your trend's not a trend anymore.
Sales tax just takes COVID.
Yeah. Yeah. Or Godzilla took out the Portofino. So, so that's pretty much with that.
So do we want to look at projects at this point?
Yeah, I can get through, that's discussion eight. So let me just, non-major funds, part of the application, say the same, equipment replacement, the only thing that's going to change is I'm going to take out that salt cell replacement amount. It's the $7,500 that's contributed to by general fund. Trash and recycling, nothing has changed since then, since the original budget presentation. And then debt service, there's just those minor changes based on the tax rate. So that's pretty much those. If there's no other questions with just the departmental budgets, we can move on to capital.
Let's do it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm going to take a live.
Or does everyone want to take like a bathroom break maybe a little bit?
Yeah. Yes. Yeah. I can cap.
Yeah.
Look at her.
Do they have any?
Yeah.
I don't cry until a person.
I'm ready for this.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, we can do it that way.
Just a thought.
Well, I can just, I can put in the foundation.
But I just hold her down.
Very hard.
Yeah.
I don't hear that.
I hear you.
I hear you.
Well, girl.
The only thing that.
I'm on roll stool. He's grabbing, holding down. All right, nurse, dickie.
What's out of the window?
Yeah.
We can talk about more though.
It's a quick save.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But then, of course, she sees the needle and they're like, it was like right on before.
It's coming from behind. You look down.
Vibrates it.
That's for, that's for wusses, man.
I know, my mouth is, for chat, that's something I had in there.
Get it over.
It's like I'm going to, I'm going to blast my, Cola Osko, man. The nurse can do this to the.
Oh, Lord.
One give you, NSC, 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 obviously. And you can say, you know, maybe something for any anxiety or anything like.
Oh.
Give me a free shot.
Hello?
What's on?
Oh, it's probably, it's probably the podium.
Yeah. Sorry, we're not talking bad about anybody yet.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, I won't be that lucky.
It's the pretty word.
Yeah.
Pretty much everyone.
All of us?
All of us?
Ammons?
All of us?
Ammons.
There's almonds.
Like commercial, yeah. He jumped out of a car, he was trying to go back.
Almonds.
Almonds.
Yeah.
Um, meat eggs.
I don't eat it.
Can't work meat eggs, food.
They're good.
It's not happening.
It's a good dog.
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 It's COVID now.
Probably my fault. I made the rock.
You made the rock.
I made it such a little white dollar thing.
That's.
I'll take rockets.
It's so bad, though. I walked the whole way to go. I mean, it was the local way.
I'm on fire.
I'm going to do stuff like this.
I thought that was a squirrel like dead in the walls somewhere.
It's good for your eyes.
No, I love broccoli.
But it's just.
Steamed broccoli, nacho cheese.
Velveeta.
We made that.
It's rock.
So take broccoli, steamed, wheatgrass, nacho cheese.
Like the Rico's.
Yeah.
Oh, broccoli.
Broccoli rock.
Broccoli rock.
Broccoli rock.
No, I know.
Broccoli rock.
Broccoli rock, you can eat it.
What?
New Jersey, it's, it's.
They're like salad or a lot of stuff.
Broccoli rock.
It's Italian.
It's Italian. It's a, usually steamed and then you put on a sandwich with some like, oh, below.
Oh, yeah.
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 I apologize for the pronunciation of quarter.
Quarter, what I mean?
Quarter, yes.
Quarter.
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 There's a water.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Thank you, water.
Water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm so lost because the accent's really high right now.
It's really high.
It's so hot.
Well, as far as getting to the south.
I think it's definitely accepted.
From Texas.
Still have, yeah.
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 Four, I guess the four responded.
Yeah.
In New York.
Yeah.
It used to be a long space.
My South Philly product.
I used to have an accent until I heard my voice.
Of course, I've been here longer than.
Chris.
Chris.
We live.
It's because you said, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I moved, I moved.
You moved to New Orleans and I think.
You moved to New Orleans.
You moved to New Orleans.
Oh, so Ian, what is he, anybody? He's from New Orleans and we say it's similar. And there's a lot of same talk from like the Lomond and that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Okay.
Capital projects?
You'll be one.
I'm happy.
Back.
Yes.
You do that on purpose?
So item number eight, can you hear me? Okay. Item number eight is capital project and purchasing discussions. I've listed in the agenda pack, the projects that MDD has funded at their July meeting. The Holly Hill Park construction for $250,000, half of the Vision Park detention deepen project for $825,000, 50% of David Memorial Phase Two for $859,000, 50% share of the stormwater map in, which is also presented in the general fund capital projects for the other 50%.
Just to clarify, those first two 50%, the idea is it's a half budget, it's a budget year and the other half and the other, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear.
Based on construction schedules and timelines, yes.
Half of it's this budget year, the idea is half of it's the next budget year. It's not that general fund's going to pay half and we're.
Yes.
It's not a, it's not the share.
It's not a share. It's not. And MDD's going to do 100%, just divide it over two years.
Right. Yes.
The project will take two years.
Yes. The only project that is being shared with the general fund is the stormwater map in. They are paying for the city entrance signs at Six Pines and they are paying for the second tranche of the, the wastewater treatment improvement plan, wastewater treatment plant improvement professional services that's towards the loan. So sorry.
You got it.
For $250,000. That amount will be reimbursed back to them from the proceeds of the loan. Going on to number two, general fund eligible projects. I have printed out a snapshot so that you can see, oh, you have that one. And it breaks it out, water sewer projects at the top and non-swear, non-swear, non-water and sewer projects at the bottom. So I guess, how do you want to approach this? Do you want to go?
I think the high ones are ones we definitely ought to do.
Yes.
I think I've, I've made myself clear pretty much on the eye and eye testing. I think it's a total waste of time.
Oh, that'll be water sewer. So let's just.
Is that what we're doing first? Water sewer first?
I have number, number two says general fund. It was just all the, my original snapshot. Sorry.
I was looking at the top of the page.
Sorry. So if we're going based on high, the first one is going to be the INCO public safety software. Chris can elaborate on this. There is a cost saving, not necessarily cost savings, but like Questica, we were able to negotiate pricing to price over a year, over the contract so you're not hit with that initial conversion information costs upfront. And I have those numbers as well.
And that's the, that's taking that 177 spread over five years.
They gave us three options, a three, five, and seven.
Yeah, on a five-year, which I think is, I guess is a good round number, it's 212,000, 13,000.
Sorry.
But that includes all the annual maintenance too. So the maintenance we normally pay for software.
But that's, that's 200 per year?
No, it's total for over the five years.
That's what I thought.
Sorry. It's 50, 54, I'm sorry, let me pull that email back up.
It won't, I mean, open it. Sorry.
Well, I mean, Chris can, so I guess my point is, this is, we're listing this on this piece of paper at 177. It's really 50, what is it annually?
Well, if you do, if they do it annually, which is, let's say 54,000, that also includes the annual maintenance that you would normally pay if you just bought it outright.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just.
In case anybody's looking at the numbers and the five-year ends up being a lot more than the, than the sticker price, that's why. Because you're not going to see that reflected in there.
My point being, this, in terms of, for purposes of budgeting, that 177 could be whatever, it's just 50 something thousand, right?
So for a three-year.
It's not 177, though.
Yeah, for a three.
177 would be if we bought it outright.
Yes. That's what's at 59 times.
So we can lower that 177 down to the.
What Mike's saying is we could, we could, we could fund a third of it this year, a third of it the next year, and a third of it the next year.
We could, unless we wanted to buy it outright.
Yeah, and that would be $59,207 a year.
And what is this 177? I'm sorry, where's the 177 coming from?
I multiply three times 59,207.
Okay, yeah, so that's not correct. That includes annual maintenance. So the number, so really, let's, what it is, the software itself is, was around 90, 90 something thousand. And then PD, adding the ticket writers and the printers adds another 54,000 to it. So that's the sticker price. If we break it up our five years, it's 200 something thousand if you include all the annual maintenance.
So my point is, we should take that 200,000 and plan for the next five years to budget 54,000.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Not 177.
That is correct.
Yeah, that was just the number.
So 177 put a line through, put 54.
So the number, the number would be 50, let's just say 55,000 round number for the next five years.
Fair enough, yeah. So if it's not 177, it's 55. So there's $120,000 of savings right there.
For the people at home, then why don't you kind of quickly go over why we need this then versus what's happening with the old system? Is that system going to fail?
Well, I'll let Troy interject in there. I think we have a two-part.
Right, we have two parts. So with the current RMS system, we're having, we have, we're having issues with the collection of data for the racial profiling. So.
Well, I moved, I moved.
Oh, so Ian Moisey, he's from, uh, New Orleans and, uh, we say the same word. And there's a lot of same conference, like the Lomond.
Capital projects.
21 or. Hot mic back.
Yes. So, um, item number eight. Can you hear me? Okay, item number eight is, uh, capital project and purchasing discussions. I've listed in the agenda pack, the projects that MDD has funded, um, at their July meeting. The Holly Hill Park construction for two hundred fifty thousand, half of the Vision Park detention deepen project for eight hundred twenty-five thousand. Fifty percent of David Memorial Phase Two for eight hundred fifty-nine thousand. Fifty percent share of the Stormwater Map-In, which is also presented in the, um, general fund capital projects for the other fifty percent.
Ju- just to clarify, those first two fifty percents, the idea is it's a half budget, it's a budget year and the other half and the other bu-.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear.
Based on construction, um, schedules and timelines, yes.
Half. Half of it's this budget year, the idea is half of it's the next budget year. It's not that general fund's gonna pay half and we're.
Yes.
It's not a sh- it's not the share.
It's not a share. It's not.
And MDD's gonna do a hundred percent, just divide it over two years.
Right. Yes.
The project will take two years.
Yes. Um, the only project that is being shared with the general fund is the Stormwater Map-In. They are paying for the, um, city entrance signs at Six Pines and they are paying for the second, tranche of the, um, where the wastewater treatment improvement plan, wait, wastewater treatment plant improvement professional services that's towards the loan, so sorry.
You got it.
For two hundred fifty thousand. That amount will be reimbursed back to them from the proceeds of the loan. Going on to, uh, number two, um, general fund eligible projects. Um, I have printed out a snapshot, um, so that you can see, oh, you have that one. And it breaks it out, water sewer project at the top and non-sewer rod, non-sewer, non-water and sewer projects at the bottom. So, I guess, uh, how do you want to approach this? Do you want to go?
I mean, I, I think the, the, the high ones are ones we are definitely ought to do.
Yes.
I think I've, I've made myself clear pretty much on the, the eye and eye testing. I, I think it's a total waste of time, uh, considering.
Oh, that'll be water sewer, so let's just.
Is that what we're doing first, water sewer first?
I have number, number two says general fund, it was just all the, my original snapshot, sorry.
I was, I was looking at the top of the page.
Sorry. Um, so if we're going based on high, um, the first one is gonna be the Inco Public Safety Software. Chris can elaborate on this. There is a cost save it, not necessarily cost savings, but, um, like Questica, we were able to negotiate pricing to price over a year, over the contract, so you're not hit with that initial, um, conversion information cost upfront. Um, and I have those numbers as well.
And that's the, that's taking that one seventy-seven, spread it over five years.
They gave us three options, a three, five, and seven.
Yeah, on a, on a five-year, which I think is, I guess is a good round number, uh, it's two hundred and twelve, thirteen thousand? But that includes all the annual maintenance, too. So, the maintenance we normally pay for software.
But that's, that's two hundred per year?
No, it's total for over the five years, I'm sorry, it's fifty, fifty-four, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pull that email back up.
It won't, I mean, open it?
Well, that, that. I mean, Chris can, so I guess my point is, this is, we're, we're listing this at, on this piece of paper at a hundred and seventy-seven, it's really fifty, what is it annually?
Well, if you do, if they break, if they do it annually, which is, let's say fifty-four thousand, that also includes the annual maintenance that you would normally pay if you just bought it outright.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I'm just.
In case anybody's figuring, looking at the numbers and, and, and the five-year ends up being a lot more than the, than the sticker price, that's why. Cause you're not gonna see that reflected in there.
My, my point being, this, in terms of, for, for purposes of budgeting, that one seventy-seven could be whatever, it's just fifty something thousand, right?
So, for a three-year.
It's not one seventy-seven, though.
Yeah, for a three.
One seventy-seven would be if we bought it outright.
Yes. That's what's at fifty-nine times.
So we can lower that one seventy-seven down to the.
What Mike's saying is, we could, we could, we could fund a third of it this year, a third of it the next year, and a third of it the next year.
We could, unless we wanted to buy it outright.
As an option.
Yeah, and that would be fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and seven dollars a year.
And what is this one seventy-seven?
I'm sorry, I, I, where's the one seventy-seven coming from?
I multiplied three times fifty-nine, two hundred and seven.
Okay, yeah, so that's not correct, that includes annual maintenance, so the number, so really, let's, what it is, the software itself is, was, uh, around ninety, ninety-something thousand, and then, uh, PD adding the ticket writers and the printers adds another fifty-four thousand to it. So that's the sticker price, if we break it up our five years, it's two hundred something thousand if you include all the annual maintenance.
So, so my point is, we should take that two hundred thousand and for the, plan for the next five years to budget fifty-four thousand.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Not one seventy-seven.
That is correct.
Yeah, that was just the number.
So one seventy-seven, put a line through, put fifty-four.
The number would be fifty, let's just say fifty-five thousand, round number, for the next five years.
So if it's not one seventy-seven, it's fifty-five, so there's a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of savings right there.
For the people at home, then why don't you kind of quickly go over why we need this then, versus what's happening with the old system? Is that system going to fail?
Well, I'll let Troy interject in there. I think we have a two-part.
Right, we have two parts, so, so with the current RMS system, when we're having, uh, we have, we're having issues with the, uh, collection of data for the racial profiling. So, uh, Senator came in, don't ask me his name, uh, the Senator came in and said, hey, I made this law, you have to have X amount of racial profiling done, and, um, departments weren't doing what he was asking for, and then, uh, they actually started doing audit, audits, and finding that the departments weren't doing those, uh, racial profiling the way he asked, so he is, um, put pressure on T-Cole to, uh, put pressure on the police departments to, 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 uh, do the racial profiling the way he wants it done. So they're doing that, they, T-Cole came and visited us and asked us about the racial profiling and, um, and discussed it with us, and the, that, the current system that we have does not collect the data the way it's, needs to be done. Chris has done a wonderful job in creating a, uh, a system to where we can manually enter this stuff in temporarily, however, it's extremely, uh, tedious and difficult and.
We're looking at compliance issues and we're looking at labor savings.
Exactly, yes, so.
Well, the current system caliber that we have, um, there's a couple of issues we had, we, we touched on a bit last year, but with COVID, we just kind of obviously shelved all that. My discussions with the company, Troy's had discussions, I know, um, Jake's had discussions with them, and there are some shortfalls, just to them as a company. Even if we didn't go with Inco, my opinion is we should look at another company. They, they just don't seem to be keeping up with the times, the technology, that, you know, not getting really deep into it, but they're, they're, with the collection of, of all the, a lot of the, the evidence we collect is video data. It's like, it's heavy media-driven, we just, they don't have the capacity for us to store our media, our case files, and the things that we need to keep, you know, to keep cases and evidence contiguous, correct me if I'm wrong, Troy?
Right.
And so, they just don't really, it's kind of strange, they just don't really want to accommodate us. Uh, and if they did, if we tried to, there'd be a large, a larger dollar, um, amount associated with buying more service, like for storage. Uh, like we want to store more video, we've got to keep all that, they're just not, they just, they just seem to be out of touch as far as a technology company. So we looked at Tyler Public Safety, they've been doing this a long time, and they came in and, um, we had a group of about seven or eight people in the police department, patrol, sergeants, um, of course, uh, chief and, uh, Lieutenant Rivers are in there, and we looked at that and they all really liked it. Plus, it gives us, uh, some other things that we don't have, uh, the racial profiling, obviously, uh, there's some other features in the software that's gonna give us like, uh, evidence, uh, property management, um, asset management, and then some other things that we'll get, uh, included in that. And, and my opinion for, moreover, is that we will be able to have control of our own data, cause right now, it's a cloud service caliber, so we send everything to them. Uh, everything's up there, so there's a limit on how much data we can put up in there. So what we are proposing is, if we do buy Tyler Public Safety, then we will be, have our own servers, we'll have our own, control our own data, so we won't have limits and caps and problems like that.
And it's already fully integrated with Inco, which is a benefit.
Ye- yes, in, in certain ways, but, but that means we'll be a hundred percent a, a Tyler, um, on Tyler products. So, there's, there's a little bit economy of, uh, scale there, uh, going with them, we get a benefit discount. The biggest cost for us is gonna be the migration, the three-quarters of that cost for the software is data migration.
Sure.
The only other option is we leave our data in to, in Caliber, which is not recommended, cause then we'd have to maintain.
Yeah, don't, don't maintain two systems.
Yeah, we, we don't want to do that. So we want to, we want to eat, bite that bullet, migrate all the data over into Inco, uh, Tyler Public Safety, and then move forward with that. And based on that, I think we've had maybe one or two of the companies reach out to us, I don't think we've really looked at anything else. My, I haven't looked at anything else.
No, we've, we've had a couple of, um, companies look, uh, reach out to us, but, you know, they're the same function. The problem with, uh, Calibers, it's been, uh, Interact, it's been, it's changed hands numerous times. It's a company that, uh, is a small company, uh, I think it came out of Chicago, and, um, they weren't with a lot of Texas laws. Uh, there was a lot of the issue with, with the, um, racial profiling was the fact that they didn't even know the Texas laws and that we needed to have this system, so.
And, and CEGIS is telling us they're not compliant.
Right.
That's another big deal.
Yes.
That we're, we went through with the audit.
Yes.
Which, it blows my mind, I don't understand how they can be involved in law enforcement and not be, not be compliant, especially with racial profiling, especially with CEGIS.
It just seems to be that they're focused on northern agencies and not agencies down here. So, uh, we need to get something that we can, um, utilize down here, but, uh, not only, um, with Tyler has all these, uh, other features, but, uh, one positive feature is, uh, Montgomery County's talking about going to a system, um, that.
Odyssey.
Odyssey, that will migrate wi- with our, our system, and we can ship, uh, data information to them and not have to manually take it to them.
They, they would have direct access to our case files.
Yes.
Through Odyssey.
Sounds like everybody's on board with it, so.
They're all good.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted to give a little, I just wanted to give some explanation, it's, it meets my approval as an IT guy, so.
Right.
Yeah, you might.
Keep it going, alright. Alright, so what's our next one, Lisa?
So, I knew the Wellman Road Drainage Improvements was gonna be reevaluated by Blile Engineering.
I can give an update. Yeah, I can give an update on that. So, as y'all know, the, the original pricing was to put underground in our existing right-of-way, uh, but that price came out to two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, uh, pretty big chunk of change, so staff looked at maybe some other options rather than going underground. Uh, one of the options that we looked at was actually doing some surface improvements inside the right-of-way, where we take, there's almost an existing swell there, but basically improve the existing swell. Uh, you won't have to deal with util, underground utilities as much, and it lowers the cost to approximately eighty thousand. The problem is aesthetically, um, you're gonna have to remove four of those trees that, that line that section on Wellman Road, and we haven't done exact calcs, but it may have to be a concrete swell as well. So it, it won't be as pretty, uh, but that is definitely an option. The third option we, we started looking at, and I've been having conversations with Encompass Health, is actually doing the improvements in a new drainage easement, just boarding, but just south of our right-of-way. I actually had a conversation earlier this week, finally got ahold of their real estate, and they are not, uh, opposed to the idea, so we're actually working with Blile to get some preliminary sketches and some costs to send over to them to evaluate, to see if they'll grant us a drainage easement, and that, that could potentially be a, a solution. Uh, so that, that's where we're at right now, is the three different options that we're, we're considering.
Yeah, I'd, I'd love to see that, and a simpler approach than this two hundred thousand something thousand dollar.
And to be clear, this is MDD eligible, they just decided not to fund it.
Correct, yes, it was, it was before MDD and they decided not to fund this project.
As presented here.
Right, and maybe the occurrences of the flooding is, is not so frequent that it's a, it's a crisis, and what we're thinking is, once we explore these other options, look at costs, um, so on and so forth, talk to Encompass, but then we come back to council.
Yeah, I agree with that.
For MDD.
We can go back to MDD as well.
Yes.
MDD should have the refund from the sewer plant by that point, so they can, they'll have some cash to.
So, um, I just.
I appreciate that, Joseph, I appreciate you chasing down those other options.
Definitely. So for now, I just suggest we put a hold on it.
Yeah, scratch, just scratch it entirely.
The next one will be the Stormwater Map-In, um, MDD has already funded half of it, uh, twenty-five thousand, general fund would have to fund the other twenty-five thousand.
I, I would agree with that, I think it's a worthwhile thing to do.
Yep.
I agree.
Moving on is the skid loader that was discussed last night, um, there is money in the replacement fund, um.
I'd like to see us pursue.
I'll bring the agenda to the twenty-fifth meeting, and we will approve it at that point.
So let's scratch it off of this budget here.
Yeah.
Does Rich get to do the ribbon cutting?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor, we'll need to test drive the skid loader.
I remember from previous years.
It'll be used.
Yeah. Uh, next project would be the generator pad and automatic transfer switch, I'll let Joseph elaborate on that one.
Yeah, so the, the quick background on this is, currently, we do have quick hookups for the Public Works building. However, the generator that powers that building is stored inside the bay and unhooked up, so it's really, um, there's no automatic transfer of power, uh, like there is here at City Hall or all of our other treatment facilities, where if the power goes out, you know, our backup generator will fire up. The Public Works building is the last remaining building that does not have that automatic transfer of power. Some of the benefits is, one, you'll have that power backup, will also free up a, an entire bay, cause it is a very large, it's a two-hundred kilowatt, uh, generator with a thousand gallon diesel tank, all on a, a trailer. Uh, so it'll free up that bay space for us and, and, um, the, the scope of the project is basically getting a concrete pad poured out there, get it mounted, the pad and wired. A lot of the cost is actually the automatic transfer switch, they're not cheap.
I, I know we've been talking about this for, at least this, or something similar to this, for almost as long as I've been on, I think it's probably time to go ahead and get that done, um, so we can keep Public Works running, uh, if, if we need to.
So I, I kind of like the fact that we have at least one generator of this size on a trailer, though, I mean, what if we had another generator at one of our other locations go down and we needed to be able to.
The actual.
We have that, we have an SDMO, two hundred and sixty kilowatt, over at the treatment plant.
It's also on a trailer.
Right, we have backup to a backup.
Ah, okay, good, I like knowing that.
Redundancy.
Yes, we do.
Like NASA.
We don't have four redundancies.
They talk, they talk nice to it every day.
So, I will add this to the list currently, is that the general consensus?
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay.
Fifty-six thousand.
Correct.
The, um, next project would be the desktop virtualization, um, I'll let Chris elaborate, this is one that's been, comes back every year so far, I think.
This one's for Ron.
Yeah.
Yeah, baby.
I'll let Chris explain any questions, if there's any.
Did you just want to, quick overview?
Well, I just, I, I note that you say currently.
Updating.
Updating pricing and scope and.
Yeah, that note might be old.
I think that's a little note, yeah.
These, these have been drafted since April, so we're.
We're just, we, we need to, the idea is to put the foundation in so we can start virtualizing desktops, so that's just, it's some infrastructure. So we, basically get in a situation where we're not buying desktops anymore, we just roll out virtualizations, basically little boxes that we put on desktops, but you need the servers and the software to do that. So once you have that established, then from, from then on, we're not buying desktops anymore.
Saves you configuration time?
Sir?
Saves you configuration time?
I'll tell you what, from, from an administrative point of view, man, it's a lifesaver, you just, you sit there and, you're not running, you're not running, doing work on desktops anymore, managing.
I take it it would make you happy, too?
Yeah, I, I just, the, the thing about stuff like this is with anything that we do, is with technology or, you know, anything that you get more deeper into, it requires a level of knowledge to maintain it. And so then you're bound to that technology, you're bound to whatever it is you buy into, to maintain that technology, so you should always be aware of that before you pull the trigger and buy that. Then you have to also buy the expertise to maintain that. So it's not like a computer sitting on your desktop, you need somebody that understands that system and how to run it, so you're then bound to hire somebody, keep somebody employed that also knows and understands that.
And that, and that's one of the reasons that you're, to me, we're adding a layer of complexity. You're still gonna have to replace some stuff as, as, as things age, but we're adding this layer of complexity for, uh, uh, what's our total employee, our total number of desktops, I mean, it's far fewer than our number of employees.
Well, it, that's, that's one way to look at it, I agree, um, the other side of that is that you're moving more towards, you know, the, the path that everything is moving to, it's, I use the word cloud-based, but especially during this last year, boy, we sure could have used it. You know, with, with people working remotely and, um, um, and all that, it, that tool would be indispensable.
Basically, they can log in remotely.
You, your desktop is wherever you log in from, and so allowing people to work remotely or having that ability, you know, we're, we're not a mobile workforce as a, as a city government, we're not that kind of workforce.
Right.
So, yeah, there's, there's definitely an argument for that to, to not go that direction. But, you know, you can say it's a layer of complexity, but it's just like anything else, the technology advances whether you want it to or not. So you either stay in the stone ages or, or you get on board and you just, you learn it and you ride that wave, and I mean, it's just the way it goes. Is there, is there a need for us to do it necessarily? No, not, not really, but it's just, um, there again, I guess it's just gearing us up for the future, and even for, though we're a small city, our data is just equally as important as City of Houston's or City of Conroe's and our workforce.
Oh, data, I agree, I mean, I, you know.
Being able to access that and, and being flexible, um, but there, there's a give and take, and it, it's a flip of a coin, you know, you're, you're buying that technology.
Yeah, I, I guess we've, I know we've talked about this, but how much do you need to, to, to sort of get started? I mean, we've, uh, years ago, I think there was an initial proposal that was really huge.
It's around twenty thousand.
That, that gets you, that gets you your server and your li- initial licenses?
Because your licenses, you only pay for as you need them.
Right.
And so, initially, we would only need a few.
So what's, what's a license for each, each virtualization cost?
It's, it comes in blocks of ten. So as you, as you license up, it's whatever, it's fifteen, sixteen, eighteen hundred dollars per block of, of licenses.
So that's a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty bucks a, a seat, right?
Yeah, well, what, the way I look at it, it's about, it's about, um, it's six hundred dollars, something dollars per seat, because you figure the, the, the box that you buy, the one-time, one-time relatively, you buy, the license, the seat license, the monitor, so on, so there's an initial investment, but then you're not replacing that box every five years. So you're just perpetua- it's a perpetual operational cost then, so it's just strictly licensing at that point.
So, is it an annual license?
Uh, well, your annual maintenance, well, you buy it and then you.
You buy, you buy your seats.
Yeah.
So I, so we're looking at, so we may, so we're spending a hundred and fifty bucks a year per seat?
No, no, not, not, not a per seat, you're buying the licenses, whatever that fee is, and then you pay your, your maintenance cost, uh, whatever that is overall for your whole system. So I, I had the numbers broke down.
Okay.
I think prior, and, but it, what it, what it comes out to, it's relatively the same cost of owning desktops.
That's, that's, this is the point, I, this is exactly the point I was getting to, is you're basically talking about the same costs with an additional layer of complexity on top of it.
Yes, in, in essence, but there again, there's a lot of, there's a lot of unseen things that you're buying, the, the flexibility that you have, the, the maintenance, like operating systems, I don't have to go update operating systems, it's, you just roll them out virtually, you don't, you know, you don't have to deploy new computers. You want to roll out software, if I need, we have a training class, let's say in the, in the EOC, you can spin up ten training machines like that, have computers for everybody to sit at and work, and then you can just wipe them out, reset them for the next set that comes in. Uh, you have software that you serve up virtually, uh, if you need certain software for people to have access to, there's, there's a lot of flexibility there. It's real hard to sit here without just geeking out, going to all the, you know. And Rich is all.
I've already quit two or three times.
I, I keep my eyes on Rich, cause as soon as I start talking about technology, he rolls his eyes and it's like, you know.
So if you get struck by lightning, now what do we do?
Well, you find, you know.
You find somebody else.
You find, well, VMware is common, VMware is very common.
Real quick, so Chris, don't get struck by lightning.
No, VMware is very common, it's, it's, it's as common as anybody that does networking or, or PCs, now most companies are virtualized, they're certain, well, we've been running.
Well, our company uses it for security purposes, is it not, is it not help us from a security standpoint as well?
It does, it does, but we've, we've had virtual servers for several years now.
Yeah, we're running servers.
So you used to, you have it, you already have the technology, all you're doing is adding it to the desktops now, we already, you're, you're already paying for it, so.
So twenty thousand would let you, and I'm not gonna use this term, but, but play with it to see if.
Well, no, we're gonna, twenty thousand dollars buys a server, cause you, you can't run desktops on the same servers you run your.
Yeah, right, that's what I mean.
So you, you gotta put a couple servers in, and then your initial whatever, how many, however many, uh, zero clients, which are, are like little boxes, they're like, almost like a PC, it's an interface, and you're buying those. And that's, that's handling the reg tech replacement, so instead of spending eight hundred and fifty dollars on a PC, I'm spending three hundred and seventy-five dollars on, uh, hardware that go on the desktop.
I'm proj- I'm projecting you to have a normal lifespan, this is not too complex for you.
No, and it's anybody in IT, right, again, virtualization, it's not, it's, you're not buying some obscure technology. It's something you already have, and VMware is pretty prevalent, in fact.
I don't have to buy Chris two-point-oh and having you here as well.
Anybody in, anybody in the business is, is, should be pretty versed in virtualization, it's not, either it's VMware or it's Microsoft, you know, Hyper-V, but, um.
And we're looking at VMware.
Yes, we're VMware, we're all VMware, yep. So there again, it's not something we have to do, it's just, it's just bridging that, it's, it's just carrying us in the future.
Come on.
Yeah.
Rich, Rich has the, let's move on, uh, look at this.
Is it a need or not? I mean, that's, the bottom line is, do, as a city, do we need this? I mean, you know, if twenty thousand dollars is the residents' money, I don't want to just, I don't want to blow it.
We're spending that money anyway.
Yeah, so if this is something that we need to keep moving forward and keep our, keep the city up today.
city up today, then just say this is what we need.
We spent $18,000 and some change last year on replacing desktops. We could have spent that same $18,000 on infrastructure for virtualization and then just have virtual desktops from here on out. And obviously, there's reasons why we did it last year. But there again, it's, it's a flip of a coin. Depends on where you want to be. You know, like I said, we're not a mobile workforce, but definitely this year showed having that tool would have been a huge advantage for us.
Who knows what the future holds when it comes to a mobile workforce?
Yeah, there's no telling. You know, we might even, but, so look at it from that standpoint. We're buying, we're spending that money anyway for replacement.
So this will be an initial investment to prevent buying desktops the next couple of years?
So that brings up a good point. If the initial investment's 20,000, what do you, what do you foresee as we continue to progress down this road? What are we going to keep seeing this coming back at every year?
Well, you're just your annual maintenance cost. So you're taking your...
Which is what?
Well, it just varies depending on how many you have. It's going to vary every year.
What do you project?
The licensing. I mean, the license is a few thousand dollars a year.
So what do you think? Because you're going to want to add each year. I'm sure you're going to add a couple. So are we talking $20,000 every year?
Oh, no, no. Say, so let's say this year, next year, I replace 10 desktops with, with hardware. Other than the money we spend on the hardware, I'm going to spend $1,800 on a block of 10 licenses.
And then what do we spend on the hardware? $3,500?
It's, it's around $575 apiece. Well, that's give and take. We buy in a monitor and a, and a box.
So next year, we, you may come back to us with like $7,000 or $8,000?
It would be whatever, yes, sir, but it would be whatever PCs would normally cost. That would go down. We would be buying zero clients instead. So instead of a PC, but we don't normally buy monitors. We just normally buy, I don't replace monitors unless I absolutely have to.
I think what's...
Can I make a suggestion that we...
Correct. It'd be regular operating.
This is a capital project. I'd, I'd love to hear some more because I think we're getting to the point with technology and pricing that this is, you're beginning to, you know, I've been sort of an opponent of this and you're beginning to sort of convince me. Maybe we bring this back first meeting in September. We got the money in reserves. And actually, you sketch out all the numbers and compare.
Well, if you, just in conclusion, if I ran the numbers over a scale of time, the money you're spending on buying PCs is about the same you're going to spend on this.
And that's fine. I just, I think it'd be useful to actually see that written down for us.
Sure.
And at this point...
And I apologize, in our capital request, I think I had that broken out last year.
Yeah, I think it was sort of broken out last year. To me, last year, it seemed to be, made much more sense to stick with the standalone PCs. But now, now you're talking a little bit. But until we get some numbers behind it, that would be, that would be my proposal, is we take it off this table. Ron, I don't know what your thoughts are. I mean, I'm talking about coming back in, you know, September.
I like it, but if we're going to take a look at it again anyway, so.
Yeah.
Charlie?
Well, I think it's a, I don't have a problem with the money, but I think it's a, it's, it's come to a fork in the road as to whether to take PCs as they are with their own operating system, yada, yada, and go the VM way, which is the way we obviously want to go, okay? But it's, it's a culture change to me. And then the city's going to move.
By waiting, do we lose anything?
No. No, your average user, if I, if I walked in and replaced your computer with a VM, you wouldn't even know it unless I told you. And that's how, that's how good it is.
But your maintenance and everything is already in your IT budget.
Yes. I mean, we're, we're adding licensing, we're adding more software maintenance to the base. That would go up. But there, if you, if you change out, if you change out what you're spending on PCs every year...
Yeah, we can do that. No problem.
Yeah.
Okay, so right now...
I'm good with it coming back in September.
Well, so am I, yeah.
I'm just wondering, do we put it as a placeholder now or?
I would.
Put a zero as a placeholder now and say no. I would rather be able, if we think it's something that we're going to do, I'd rather put the number in there now.
That's the way I feel. I'll put it in now.
I still want to see the numbers.
Yeah, I want to see the numbers before we authorize this.
I'll do now, side by side comparison.
Cool.
So it's a yes with rubber band?
Right.
Where have we seen that before?
Better be good numbers.
Better be good numbers.
I've done it, I've done it a few times. They're pretty good.
Okay, next.
This will be the parking rehabilitation and fencing. This is a Joseph project.
A Joseph project.
Yeah, sorry.
I bet it is.
Joseph project. You're spending all our money.
Bring me the millions.
What are we on?
This is the parking.
Parking rehabilitation?
Yeah, parking rehab, rehabbing, fencing.
PD parking?
Yeah, so again, just a quick...
Is this the PD parking or is this like...
Yeah, quick, quick history on this one. It's, it's kind of similar, you know, story with the Wellman. The initial scope was replacing all of the old asphalt here in front of City Hall, every bit of it, redoing all the conduit, new parking lot lights, because the asphalt's getting worn, the parking lot lights are dim. Basically, a whole fresh overhaul of, from City Hall where the concrete ends, all the way north, PD, everything. But that total came out just under a million dollars, pretty big, pretty big price tag. So what staff did was, well, I got with Chief Dunlap, and we started looking at maybe we could just do the PD's portion, just to kind of fix some of their, some of their parking issues, add the security fencing that they'd been requesting, and fix the lighting in their area. Also add a cantilevered car cover for all of the patrol vehicles so they're not just cooking in the sun, the ones that aren't on the street. And so when we narrowed the scope, so give you some, some perspective, the original scope for everything was about 50,000 square feet of concrete, or of asphalt being replaced with concrete. Narrowing it down just to the PD's area was about 15,000 square feet. We looked at two ways of doing that. One was demo the asphalt, repour with asphalt, but with all the, the gate that was requested and fencing and all that. That's not, that would not be my recommendation. My recommendation is if you're going to do the demo work, put in everything, you need to go back with concrete. We did a price breakout. Roy helped me with that. We did a price breakout to that, and it was just, just under $400,000. It was 387,400. We did have a 15% contingency, but I went ahead and just rounded it up to the 400 you see here. So basically, what that 400 will pay for is demo the asphalt for the PD's parking. It'll get in the fence, cantilevered parking, additional lighting, new lighting, some additional parking spaces, and it'll all be concrete.
Have you figured in inflation now because a lot of this construction materials are on through the, through the roof?
Well, I did, I'd, probably not enough, but I took it from that 387 up to 400. But concrete, yeah, concrete, wood, construction materials are just insane right now. It's ridiculous.
Yeah. So circle back to Councilman Fletcher's point earlier. If this isn't an absolute need, now might not be the best time to be undertaking a project like this, just from a construction cost standpoint. Whereas, I bet you a year from now, we're going to see a whole different shift in that market.
Right. Very good point.
It's a moderate.
We talked a little bit about how you construct that cantilevered parking and lighting and where you put the, pour those bases. Is it still possible that we provide that with out doing the demo in the parking lot, something that can be, you know, not something we would have to tear out later? Because we were talking about that being what, 30, 40,000 to get, get their cars covered and lit.
Right.
And I thought that might be, what's that?
Yeah, it's about 40,000.
About 40,000. And the idea is to run them, you know, run the cantilevered parking, basically in the existing parking lot. No, and that's where we're going to put concrete later.
Right.
But install it in such a way that when we do the concrete parking lot. So at least at this point, what we could do in this budget year is, is get the, get the cars covered, get the tajos all covered, and get them lit so they're safe. And that would be a cost of about 40, about 40,000 would take care of that as we wait for concrete and fencing materials to come down. So I'm throwing that out to council as a, as a possible thing that we could, we could go with that approach.
What grading would you have to change with where the parking would be at? Or would we be able to use the existing parking the way that it is?
Oh, sorry, I don't know.
To be able to do his... Just run them along that.
Yeah. So the, the actual support legs of the cantilevered will go on the outside of the existing asphalt. So you, you could get away with putting those in and, and not have an issue with, you know, doing any demo work that would affect those. You are going to have a little bit when you run the conduit because the idea is to have those lit underneath that cantilevered cover. So you have additional lighting for those tajos, especially, you know, as night shift comes in and they're swapping out gear. They'll be able to see if anybody's creeping between tajos.
So as we're pulling up all this asphalt one day, do we think that there's an opportunity to reconfigure the parking lot? And if so, are we going to, are we going to eliminate that possibility by putting these cantilever shades up?
No, this won't eliminate any potential changes to, there, we do have ideas for changing that parking a bit.
Yeah, because it's not ideal the way it is right now.
It isn't. Absolutely not. No, these, these are going to be pushed up on the edge of where any of the parking would be and out of the way of any sort of future revisions. We looked at that as well.
It could be designed with that future in mind.
Correct.
I think that, I guess my, my approach is that would take care of the immediate sort of safety and heat concerns, both for equipment and our officers.
Let's say Troy.
So I agree.
You just got a $260,000 pay raise, by the way. Just keep that in mind.
So let me, let me, let me rephrase that for you.
In some new software.
I didn't get the raise. So everybody out there knows that. I personally did not get 200. So...
So 240.
Right.
258.
So the, the most ideal situation would, would be some fencing and stuff like that to keep people from, from coming through. That's our, one of our, our big things. We have tons of people coming through. However, that's, it's not going to go with the construction and everything like that. So, so it's best, do it, do it right. So if we have to wait on the whole project and everything like that, I'm fine with that. But if we want to do it like, like Joseph was just discussing, with just covering the patrol cars and keeping those out of the heat, that would be good, too. Because we, we lose a lot of stuff due to the heat, a lot of damage and everything from those cars just sitting out there. So, and the lights, too. The lights are pretty, pretty, pretty poor as well.
I'm assuming those are motion lights? Is that what we're talking about?
No, underneath the cantilever, those would be fixed.
They lit all night long?
Yes.
LED lights.
Yes. And they need to be. They need to be. So guys, when the guys pull in, they can see that somebody's not sitting there waiting. Because just the way the parking lot is, next to Incupus House and everything, and across from some of the other hotels, we just, we constantly have people walking through the parking lot. We've actually had people hiding behind cars and stuff, so.
I'm, I'm with, with Mike on this. I think that...
40,000.
Phase it in.
Okay.
And just phase it in.
Yeah, check.
Mayor Protell?
Yeah, I'm...
Okay, Ted?
If it'll, if it'll do what it wants.
So let's put it down for 40, and we'll get Joseph to come back to us with the actual scope of work.
As long as we don't have to go back and redo it.
I, that's my, that's my only concern. I don't want to waste 40 grand.
We could get away, if we did the fencing, we would have to redo. That would be a lot of demo work after you put it. I would not recommend doing the fencing and not do the entire project.
Okay.
Good.
Next project would be flooring replacement at City Hall. The price did increase from what was presented in the capital project books that you, you were provided. The new cost is about $40,000. And I'll also let Joseph explain this one.
Flooring?
Yeah.
Sorry, I was making a head. So this was, I believe, discussed by council a little bit. We had some discussion about flooring and, and the general consensus that staff got from council was to, you know, look at, rather than doing the entire building, look at, you know, doing some of the common areas because that price came in just under $100,000. And so what, what staff has done is we've looked at the areas that are common areas, but also that have the highest amount of wear and look the worst that need to be replaced. And I've got, I've got a map. I can kind of explain the areas in brief here. I'll start with the cost. We were able to trim that cost down to just under $40,000. And what it's going to replace is all of the, the vinyl tile on the PD side and the hallways and the patrol room. None of the offices, those are all carpeted and replaced with the luxury vinyl tile. That was a cheaper option. And that stuff is bulletproof. It's very hardy. It also included... Yeah, there you go. Thanks, Lisa.
So I'm not meaning to interrupt here, but I think this is another one of the, you know, originally, this was a 25,000 dollar project. Now it's almost 40. It went up $15,000. It's, you know, we're buying high and selling low, you know? I mean, I think, I think this is another one of those where I don't think that we shouldn't do it. I think we should do it. I think we need to wait until about, you know, April or May or, you know, revisit this next budget year. Because I guarantee you that over the course of next summer, these prices are going to start dropping, plummet, plummeting. When inflation spikes, inventory is back up, consumer demand is back low, you're going to see this pendulum shift. And coming around through next summer, all of these construction costs, my belief, are going to drop. And so I think this is another one of those, if we were to wait until next year, we probably are maybe back at that $25,000, if not lower.
So is this mostly a labor cost or is this material increase?
A lot of...
I haven't seen it. I kind of worked from a...
You haven't had to build anything. I guarantee Ted has.
Just above labor and material.
Yeah, labor and material.
The plank has, has gone up a lot. I guess at Home Depot, I haven't really noticed the residential...
The problem that you run into is you don't have enough labor in the market, number one. Number two, for materials, you don't have enough labor making materials.
For the inventory.
So it's all supply and demand, and it's ridiculous. I mean, you went from a four by eight sheet of plywood being 15 bucks to it's 75 and sometimes it's on a price on it.
Like a lot of projects that, like a lot of our projects that show up on Capitol. Sometimes it takes until the third pass through to get it anyway. And I agree with Rich, the timing's not really quite there.
I, I do like, I do think there's pieces in this that, you know, I like that we've cut down to the high, to the important ones. I'd like maybe six months, eight months, we take a look at it again. This, this is one of those that we can, you can bring back to us mid-year and...
Well, and if it's under 15,000, then it's, you know, Kathy can use city minister approval to, so it may be that, you know, six or eight months from now, if the prices have dropped and we want to reduce the scope of this particular and start, start biting off chunks of it, then we can do that.
Right. That may be the thing to do anyway. It's just to do chunks at a time. Just each year, take a, each year, take a decent...
And since the overall cost is under 50,000, I'd, I'd feel comfortable with that because we, it wouldn't look like we're trying to avoid procurement law.
Right.
Yeah, no, you're just...
It's underneath that limit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
A good plan.
Okay, so the next project will be city entrance, oh, sorry. The next project is city entrance signs. This is an additional four signs, not included in the one that MDD has, has covered. So it brings each sign, I believe, to $40,000 each.
That's right.
Yes.
So this is replacing the sign on Research Forest, replacing the sign on Pinecroft, and adding the signs that council wanted staff to look into, one on the northbound Service Road and one on the southbound Service Road as you enter into the city.
So remind me...
About 40,000 per, per sign. That includes the purchase, the construction, the sign, and then the irrigation landscaping, electrical and things that need to be brought to those sites.
So where could we, where can we put the north, the southbound sign? What's the first spot?
On the southbound side? So the spot we are looking at is just south of Country Lane, right as you enter the city limits.
Okay.
On the outside shoulder. You cannot go between the feeder and the main lanes, but you go on the outside of the feeder.
So basically, right, right around where our city limits sign is what you're seeing?
Correct.
Okay.
And on the northbound, the same thing, right there by MTV.
Okay.
So it, it is allowed by text out. They do have some requirements, but we meet all those requirements. And as far as the sign isn't too big, footprint's not too big. And we can meet the spacing requirements from off of their back of curb. They do have some requirements, but we meet all those requirements. And as far as the sign isn't too big, footprint's not too big. And we can meet the spacing requirements from off of their back of curb.
So originally, this was a $90,000 project, which included Research Forest and Pinecroft. Now it's well, Pinecroft and Medical Plaza.
It's basically 40,000 a sign. It's just, you know, anywhere from zero to how many that is.
I don't know, I'm not there right now.
So I get, so what I'm trying to figure out, did the bid go up based on, again, what we've been talking about? Did the number go up and did we drop Research Forest?
No, Research Forest, so the original three on there were, well, four, that six pines is already covered. So the original three were Research Forest, Pinecroft and Medical Plaza. Staff looked at it, you're going to get most bang for your buck visibility on Medical Plaza, sorry, not Medical Plaza, that's the least, on Research Forest and Pinecroft. And then at a later council meeting, council had asked staff to ask if we could put it in text out right away. And we discovered that we could. So what we ended up here was Research Forest, Pinecroft and then the two on Interstate 45 at 40, 40,000 apiece. It's about 26, 27 for the sign itself. And then the rest of that is getting water and power to the new sites or reusing the water power at the old site, but then you got to pay for demo of the existing sign. And those are going to be the two on, you know, the one on Research and the one on Pinecroft.
And this price hasn't gone up based on labor or materials? I mean, we got a bid, that's.
No, yeah, the bid on the sign is, it's the same.
I really like this from, particularly those two, I think Ted and I were talking about the north and southbound. From a announcing to people that you're in Shenandoah. So there's a public perception there. It's also to me, a crime with our, in partnership with the police. You let people who move in, oh, I'm in Shenandoah and I'm just going to keep driving until I hit some other city north of Shenandoah and vice versa. And that's one of the reasons I've been in favor and why we asked about the feeder signs. I mean, whether or not it's in the budget this year. But that's my logic or thought process behind getting them on the north and southbound feeders is making a fairly large pronouncement. Those little green signs that says Shenandoah with our population way off. That's not necessarily convincing, but you put a nice big sign that says welcome to Shenandoah. That may encourage a few less criminals.
Well, I think it obviously introduces your city. I mean, that's why the Woodlands has it all over the place. I mean, every place you pull into the Woodlands, it's big and beautiful and you know you're going in the Woodlands. Same is true for most cities that have an actual plan with their city. They announce their city, you know you're coming in and that's the feel all the way through their city. I think, you know, that's one of the things that we're missing across the board. Again, whether it's for this budget year or not, you know, maybe it's scaled back to two and two, I don't know.
Does the construction cost apply to this as well?
Well, the sign, the materials aren't going to change on the signs either way.
Yeah, I mean, you're going to pay, you got some simple irrigation, some simple wiring. So you're not going to have as, it's not going to be as noticeable as with the other projects that we've been considering.
And this is MDD eligible?
It is. It was discussed before MDD and they opted not to fund it.
Any of it?
They didn't, they thought one or none?
The replacement.
They replaced one.
Yes, the six pines, which is partially covered by.
Yes, Lifetime has covered half of it.
That's why I kept these separate because Lifetime is covering more than half of the other one. So I lumped these together and MDD discussed and opted not to fund any of these.
Personally, I'd like to see, and I know it's money and we're spending money, but I'd love to see that north and southbound feeder signs. Those are the two to me, I mean, southbound's fixed, we're not changing that. I agree with staff, there's no point in putting something on Tamina until we figure out where that's going. And David Memorial, there's no reason to do anything there until we get that construction processed. Those are the two that I would like to see, even in this budget year if possible. I just think it's a, it's a big step forward for the city. And I agree with Ted, it announces the city. It lets people know that they're in Shenandoah. It lets them know when they're looking at Shenandoah restaurants, neighborhoods. It announces us, as I said earlier, to the criminals. It announces us to people who want to shop and eat and play in Shenandoah. I think it's money well spent.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Ron, but as we discussed this in MDD, I think we opted to fund the 250 in the water loan and then said that once that gets paid back, we would look at some other projects.
Not recalling this specific on that.
And I don't know if it was specifically this project, but I know that we said, you know, there was some other pressing that we were taking on in MDD.
I think it's something that MDD would take a look at, maybe in next budget year, yeah.
I thought 250 was a Holly Hill Park.
Well, we have 250 that was already budgeted for Holly Hill Park, but with the water loan.
Wouldn't we just mention something about?
Yeah, so they'll get, they'll get 500,000 back from the proceeds of the loan because they've put in that amount for professional services. And I think it was the consensus, and I'll go back to my notes and confirm, but that once that proceeds happens, we'll bring back some capital projects to reevaluate at that time.
I think it's worthwhile. I just don't know about right now. Maybe we just bypass it and if there happens to be another $160,000 there when we get through all this, then let's.
Well, I guess my proposal is to cut it in half, just do the northbound, southbound.
Where's the, I'm still fuzzy on where the northbound is. Where we, so, okay, we're talking about putting like a monument sign there, okay.
So that as you're driving on the feeder or even you'll probably be able to see it from the freeway, that's, oh hey, you're in Shenandoah, starting here.
Right, if you recall, when we looked at the construction documents, it's many months, but you got a six foot base, it's eight feet tall, it's got the two decorated brick pillars with the hanging banner in between. It's.
And if we talk to the property owner about being able to get an easement to put that, send it to text out right away and we talked to text out already about it?
Right.
I hate to, I hate to base projects on whether or not we think we'll have a little extra money left over to spend, you know? It's like if we need the project.
I guess that's mine. I think it's a worthwhile project on its own for those reasons, for moving us forward as a city, for announcing us as a city. Absolutely critical. I don't know, we need to put ourselves out there.
Based on the timeline for the loan, it should fund by the end of the first quarter of the year. So we could come back mid-year and take a look at whatever we don't fund or the whole thing, whatever council decides to do. Or we could go to MDD again as well.
So it'd be 80,000 if we did the two there, the northbound, southbound.
Correct.
Who would support that?
I know Ron's.
I'm not there yet. I don't think, I understand what you're saying, Mike, but I don't think $80,000 is going to do what you want.
I'm always surprised how many people that I work with know Shenandoah based on the speed traps that used to be here 10 years ago.
15 years ago.
They know where Shenandoah is, yeah.
I'm just not there. I'm just.
Sure.
Oh, I'm there for the two. I think that, I think it's important to identify our city across the board. I'm really big on, you know, trying to beautify our city from where it is to where it can be. And I think that's part of that process. Again, whether that's right this moment today.
Yeah.
Or that's six months from now.
Yeah, nobody's disagreeing with that long term, but where I'm sitting right now, this moment, no.
I think that.
Six months from now, a year from now, probably.
I mean, how many more capital projects do we have to talk about?
Uh, just one more, two more.
Table it and talk about that when we come back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just need to see the numbers.
We do have, what, 4.3 million and.
Um, 2.6, right?
4.3.
That's the number, the one above it, yeah.
Yeah, that's what's already in that 180 reserve. It'll be this 2.8. Okay, so the next project will be the streetlights additions at David Memorial.
Solar?
He's got new improved solar lights, gosh.
Solar through a wire in the ground. So this project was also presented to MDD for funding. Again, they opted not at this time to fund it. The idea here was that as we move closer to David Memorial, extending all the way to Highway 242, there are some areas along the existing portion of David Memorial, primarily, you know, north of the stadium to the roundabout and beyond up to Entertainment Boulevard that, well, the roundabout is well lit, but there's sections that have no lighting, are very dark at night. There is a curve, a slight curve in one of the areas that's dark. So staff went ahead and spoke with Entergy just to get some pricing so council could discuss it, see what council's feeling was on it. And what staff discussed with Entergy was to match the poles that were used at the roundabout. So they have the Cobra Head LED, their 41-foot poles with 300-foot space. And we'd ask for 300-foot spacing. So it ends up being 14 lights. So basically you would have street lighting from Entertainment Boulevard all the way down to Tamina along David Memorial. And that total cost from Entergy was 110,000 dollars.
And they're all consistent, the same poles, is that what you're saying?
They're going to match what it looks like in the roundabout.
Yeah, and if you have ever left the movies at AMC and come out that way, you will realize how dark it is over there and that it's a safety concern.
Chief, have we had any accidents over there at night based on the lighting?
I know of one. Not worked a fatality.
No. Yes, we've had a few, but.
Caused by stupidity of the lighting, that's.
Right. A little bit of both. I couldn't give you a number on that.
And I think also the increased traffic coming from Sam Moon Center is going to influence possibly more.
And this is a project that will be MDD eligible, yes?
It was.
Yes.
And they just opted not to at this time.
Well, the MDD only had so much in its budget.
Yeah.
Spent 2.2 million this year, so.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, one that they didn't want to pay for.
Chief's gates.
There was a lot thrown at us and there just wasn't enough in the budget to pay for all of it.
Those MDD guys.
Yeah. Says the quitter. So question on the light poles. Obviously, those aren't going to be the only ones on David Memorial. So as we head north, are we still going to be able to match those poles in the future?
Great question.
The plan would be to match it up to obviously our city limits. That's what we control beyond that.
Are they still going to be available is the question.
Oh, yes, yes, the 41-foot with the Cobra Head. It's a, when I spoke with Entergy, they said, oh, the Shenandoah's special. So apparently it's a special light.
Have we got specs on these lights yet and know what they look like?
Yeah, they exist there at the roundabout. So anytime you drive the roundabout, they're very good lights. They have the black powder coated posts, they're 41 feet, they're very tall. And so that lets that LED, which is very directional cast, they're very bright, they're good lights.
And aesthetically, it matches our city.
Yes. And yes, John, we'll put banner brackets on them.
Please. What's, just curious, what's the monthly charge for those?
The monthly charge per, I don't know what it is, per light?
Well, I just, I mean, I'm assuming.
Seven thousand per, yeah, per month for our street right away. I could look it up real quick, but it's several thousand for our street light. It's gone down significantly since we got rid of the valley and they've done some version to LED.
Was it metered or just per light?
It's metered.
Okay.
You can have several lights per meter, but each light eventually is going to have a meter somewhere.
And you said we had a fatality over there because of lighting?
We did with the motorcycle.
It's a while ago because it's when I was still on duty.
Yeah, so that was a long time.
That was a long time ago.
I know.
Did we? Did we?
The dead guy is really having.
The stadium wasn't even there.
No, it was, it was, it was still there.
But I'm not that old. I've been here a little while. No, it was a fatality, motorcycle accident.
Of course, it probably didn't have anything to do with excessive speed.
Yeah, absolutely not.
And no helmet. Helmet, full body gear.
Well, the road isn't exactly straight line either, so.
Yeah.
What was that, I'm sorry?
I said the road isn't exactly one straight line, there are some curves.
Right. And that's where they, that's where they went off the road.
So it makes it fun.
I mean, I will say the good news is from the stadium south, you do have, as long as the parking lot lights are on, you do have some overcast. So it's not completely dark, but anyone who's driven that at night, once you get north of that stadium.
Yeah, it's dark.
It's dark.
So how many, how many poles is this again?
This is 14 poles. And that takes, that gets you lighting from Entertainment to Tamina.
It's a decent price for 14 poles.
That's what I sort of, yeah, I was running.
I mean, personally, if I had to rank them, I'd say the lights come before the signs, but that's just me.
I would say it was more of a safety issue. Yeah. The lights.
I see it more as a want versus a need, comparing the two.
And again, this is staff produced. This is something that, to be brutally honest, I didn't want, you know, council to come in and say, it's really dark, why didn't you show us something about getting lights there yet?
This was.
This was a staff produced, you know, staff noticed that this is a potential need and wanted to get it before council for discussion.
And Sebastian and I noticed too, we come from the movies.
And this is an energy base, we're writing a check to energy and they're doing everything.
Correct. So you do have that aspect of it. It's an energy project, so it'll be open cut. You know, they'll do it as cheaply as possible.
Well, nothing's over there, so it's not a big, I mean, it's all on the east side, right? All the poles are east side, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, there's nothing there. It's not like they're tearing out people's yards.
And we're getting closer and closer to having that be a whole thoroughfare all the way, so.
Right. Right, and that was another consideration is when that extension goes through, it's going to be, it's going to be heavily used. So it'll be good to have a well-kept road through, at least through Shenandoah's portion.
Yeah, if it goes black and some of the.
If they crash in the swamp up there, then that's not our choice.
Yeah, I think eventually, and let's, you know, we've talked about it.
We're going to have to light it at some point.
We've talked about it ad nauseam, right? We're really hoping, pushing hard to try to get that road built in the next calendar year. I was about to say, that's one step closer, so.
Yeah.
As much as I don't want to spend 110,000 dollars on street lights, it's probably, it probably makes sense.
Yeah.
So general consensus to add it?
Agree.
Yeah.
I would agree with that.
Circling back to the signs. Do we want to do a partial or put it off?
How's our money looking?
What's the difference, so where's our money at?
Yeah.
Yeah, where's our money?
We're at a budget surplus of 291,000 currently.
We're at a what?
Budget sur, I mean deficits, not surplus, my bad.
I was about to say, what is deficit?
291,000.
I like humanity.
Sorry.
That's the police race.
Well, yeah.
So, but we do have that nice little available cash pot we could.
For capital proj, like, I think the lights, the lights to me are a perfect example of something that, the surplus cash or the cash on hand is perfectly justified in using that for. That's only a third of our deficit, but I mean, all of these projects are eligible to use that.
Yes, the 2.8.
That's that 2.8 million. That's, that's why you, you know, as I said, a while back, we're. That's, that's why you, you know, as I said, a while back, we're still, what's that?
We're still going backwards.
Well, I mean, you save money for planned expenses and unplanned expenses, this is why we save.
Yeah, I agree with that. I'm worried about what this next year holds, that the unplanned part is the part that scares me.
Well, you know.
From a sales tax revenue standpoint and, you know.
Well, the other side of that too, and I mean, we don't know what the sales tax is going to do.
Or drink tax or hotel.
Is that we have a $12 million project that's going to be completed over here this year. $250 million project that's underway. Rather, yeah. Which, right, no, exactly. That's what, that was the same one I was talking about, that $200 million. The $250 million project that's-
Talking about Memorial Hermann.
Memorial Hermann. Well, no, yeah, yeah, no, I'm talking about-
And then Lifetime.
I'm talking about Lifetime, the apartments-
Lifetime's $180, what is Lifetime?
Yeah, $180 million for the apartments or whatever it is. So they have the Larym Tax that's going to come into play that we're not seeing right now. All that's going to play out once Lifetime's completely done to be about a million dollars in that project. Just with the apartments by themselves, it's going to be about $650.
I don't know that the apartments will be opened by Jackie, will they be open this fiscal year? They'd be just under if they were.
I don't think so.
I don't think they are, I think I've been, I've been told by Lifetime that they're-
2022, right?
Well, so now they're, now, last time I heard, they're thinking more like before the end of 22. For the apartments.
Oh.
And the Lifetime's going to be summer of 23.
The Lifetime was early 23, I knew Mill Creek was going to be opening prior to that.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand it's summer of 22.
How far are you thinking? I don't know, there's a definitive date on the timeframe of Mill Creek opening.
I don't think we should look at future at-
No, no, I don't, well, you can't play on the, I mean, you can't count that in because it's not there yet. But what I'm saying is that, you know, when you're looking at things that are coming, because we're looking at spending.
We have, we have our 180 days plus-
Conversation over 74.
Well, and in hindsight, looking back at last year, you know, we thought COVID's going to do us in with sales tax and we ended up only coming in 300,000 less than the previous year. So do I think, you know, and from everything I've read in, I don't think there will be another shutdown, but public perception's everything when you're dealing with COVID at this point. But I think we've had a lot of good business, businesses go online, you know, and we have more coming online, so.
Yeah, hotels that opened this year that we haven't seen in our tax base.
Yep.
We could bring the signs and the streetlights back in a few months or mid-year.
I think the streetlights we need to move forward with only because I think we're pushing as hard as we can to get that road built, you know, and that's- Because that will produce a lot of revenue for the city if we can get that, if we can open up that thoroughfare that will drive a lot of traffic into our businesses.
And there's a safety concern.
And, yeah, obviously safety for a lot of different reasons.
Signs can get pushed.
But, yeah, but I say the signs, I think that's probably a push.
Virtualizations in red type for a reason, right Lisa?
Yeah, because Chris is going to bring back numbers.
And to be clear, banner poles and banner signs are not going to be on David Memorial, are not going to be on I-45 with traffic counts, but they will help when people come in to know that they're in the city and we can promote everything here.
Oh, no, absolutely, once you're in the city, and David Memorial, once it gets cut through, is going to see a lot of traffic.
Oh, yeah.
I think it makes a lot of sense to keep, to have those.
It will actually have a road to drive north on that doesn't flood.
Exactly. Well, and desktop virtual, I mean, this also is, we're not going to spend it till it's, you know, it's approved, right? So we're going to see desktop virtualization in September. At that point, we're going to put it in the budget so we know we have the money. If we need to spend it, we'll make a decision then, and it's true with most of these things. So we're budgeting expenses.
Let's circle back to the backup generator automatic transfer switch for just a second. I mean, it's $56,000, do we, do we feel like, it's just a question, if we're in a deficit?
I think we live with what we got in soldier.
Do we need to spend $56,000 so that we don't have to go plug it in?
Well, and another question is what, what critical tasks are over there?
Well, it's not that the generator won't work, it's just they have to take it outside and plug it in before it works.
Well, you lose power, you're on UPSs until the generator works, right?
Right.
So you got to get a truck, raise the garage door, pull it outside so you can run it outside, turn it on.
Right. So, you know, the most use that gets is say during a hurricane where we're sheltering in place, the guys sleep over there.
Takes how long to set it up?
Right, so they-
30 minutes?
Well, you got to get it out, they ain't backed up, it's going to take you an hour to get it set up, hooked up. Well, I say that guys are going, no, you're wrong, because there's pallets stacked all around it, they'd have to move first. Just for storage, because we're kind of tied on storage, so they jam stuff around it.
But you push that out with the skid loader.
That's right. But that, that's when, you know, that's when they do hook it up, really, is if they're going to be sheltering there. That way they can not be sleeping in the heat.
Not that I, I absolutely want them to have a generator, 100%, that's not part of the question. If we're talking about once a year at most, and what we're really talking about is a convenience issue of an extra hour's worth of work, is it worth spending $56,000 on, for that one hour once a year?
Fair question.
I'm just asking the question.
And that was, that's why I mentioned another benefit is getting that storage space back. You know, like I said, it is packed around with a bunch of equipment because it's tight in there. You know, especially with the EMS and the other bays, they're kind of just cramming everything around that trailer just to get out of the way so we can park our trucks in there at night and they're not out cooking and sun, which keeps them in, you know, really good, really good condition.
So the plan is that, is that going to be another generator? You going to sell the other generator or you going to take the one off the trailer and put it on the pad?
We'll take it off the trailer and get, get it out of that bay completely and just mount it on a concrete pad.
Where would the concrete pad go?
It's going to go on, just on the outside of the building. You know where that three-yard dumpster has its own little enclosure? It'll be just behind there because that's where our hookups are.
So the biggest cost on that is going to be your automatic switch, switch over?
That's going to be probably half the cost.
So what if we just do the pad, move the generator over and we still?
So they just walk out there and hang it?
Do a quick connect? That's definitely, yeah, definitely an option.
I like, I like where you're thinking there. So then that way, I mean, we can always do the switch later.
Let's see what those costs are real quick.
I'd say that pad's got to be less than 25 grand.
Right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if he says-
Concrete's what, about $4 a square foot right now and you're talking about how big is that generator?
Let's see, it fits on a-
Because that frees up the bay.
It barely fits on a 20-foot trailer, so it's pretty big. But that also includes a 1,000-gallon diesel storage tank.
Well, you'll need pad for that, right?
Yes, we're going to want that stored with it.
20 by 12.
Do we have to do any surround around the pit there?
240 square feet, is that right?
What's that?
We said that we have to do a surround around the tank in case it leaks?
We will have to because of the, the type of tank it is.
I, I'm a Ted on that, I think that's, that would be a great plan. Because that would be still a whole lot faster than you're packing that and you get your bay back.
I mean, it's already hooked up, all you have to do is-
It's already hooked up, you just have to throw the switch.
Switch.
And so, so on the breakout here, the transfer switch is 17,500. You got 10,000 for miscellaneous conduit wire, there's 12,500 for the pad and mounting, and then 2,000 for MOP.
I don't know, as long as we have staff, I don't know that we ever get the automatic transfer.
I mean, that's a fair, that's a fair point, like-
It's a very good, it's a very good point.
I would propose we do that.
Yeah, I, I, I'm in on that.
I could do that one, yeah.
Let's do that.
All right, so what was the amount?
Just take 17 off of that.
No, no, you take, you take basically 40 off of it, because you said the pad was how much?
The pad is 12,500.
It's 12,5, which I think is high, but-
Well, you still have to do the, you still have to connect the generator.
Yeah, yeah, I wouldn't just do a 12, I don't think we're going to get it all with 12,5, but, you know, if you add, you know, make it maybe 17,5, add 5,000 to that.
Just cut it now.
Try not to shoot myself in the figure, but I think, I think we could take care of it, 17,5.
Okay.
That's 250. Do you think 17,5 will do it? Okay.
I hope so.
All right.
If not, I'll come back to it.
I know, I'm shooting from the hip here.
I think that, I don't think that will-
20.
I, I would, I mean, I think you're going to be skinny on it already, even at 20.
Not, not too much.
I know. My eyes are starting to get tired.
So the 56,000 is going to 20?
20.
That will be partially funding it?
And the consensus was that we're staying with the lights but not the signs, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We're going to throw the signs back in?
We'll throw the signs back when they get their refund.
Yeah.
I think that's a good plan.
Okay. All right, so I think that completes the general fund cap or project discussions. You're still a deficit of about 255, budget deficit, not, you know, money.
And that's leaving, that's having the tax rate at?
17,37.
17,37.
And that's basically the change in, which is a good thing, it's, it's, it's updating our, our pay scale for the police department.
That's basically what we're doing, so I think that makes sense.
Yeah, before we added this, these items, we were at like 14,000, so. The operation was still covered by the budgeted surplus, it's just the capital that's still coming from available cash.
We're just going to have to take, take that money out of available cash.
That's fine.
How much, how much more do you think we got?
We just have water sewer projects, which are pretty self-explanatory. The only one, I think, the first water sewer project for $6 million is obviously the loan, so that's going to be approved based on loan proceeds. We spent the application and it's going through review process right now. The second project will be the research force rehabilitation phase two.
Yes.
That's, I'm sorry, I'm not on the right screen, okay. 176, so, sorry.
176,8?
Yes.
So this is going to be the phase two, we did complete a phase one this year, which is replacement of pumps. I believe I've told you this before at a previous council meeting, we had some, some failures of, you know, the riser pipe, the lift pipe, and one of them started leaking, so, and then the electrical component ended up costing a lot more than anticipated, so we broke into two phases. So the second phase will finish the, getting the electrical control panel moved, repairing the damaged conduit. We're going to fix those lift piping inside as well as blast and paint the above-ground piping and replacement of some of the valves that are worn. So it's just finishing, phase one, we fixed the fencing, got some safety equipment, new pumps, and a new hoist. The total for this, to finish this is 176,800.
Yeah, we have to do, I mean, I don't know anybody else, we have to do that, we've got to finish this project.
Yeah.
In phase one, there's really not a whole lot of choice in this one.
Because that, because that one was waiting for a couple of years as well before we got to-
We kicked this one down, this has to get done.
Time to finish.
We're running with the patch on one of our lift pipes now, so hopefully, it should hold until we get it replaced.
Okay, consensus good?
Yeah.
Okay. Second project's going to be the I-45 cross-in at English grade reversal for 44,000.
So this project came from our study that we completed of our wastewater collection system. This is one of the areas where we determined, either through settling or initial construction, the grade of the sewer line is reversed and it needs to be corrected. And it's causing staining water in the sewer lines, which causes corrosion, odor issues. The location of this, it runs southbound on the outside of the 45-feeter, basically from out back to Starbucks.
Yeah, it's always full.
Yeah. And, and this, yeah, this is sanitary sewer and I'd like to get in there now before any more development hits because it's just going to be a whole lot easier to get the job done with less disruption.
Yeah.
I could do that one too.
Yeah.
The next project would be the pine craft upgrades for new capacity at the hospital tower. This is a lift station.
Lift station portion.
Yeah, you have to do that.
Yeah, we, we need this, preferably, preferably before they fill up that new tower.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then consensus is good to go with that one?
Yes.
Okay. Next one is going to be the pine craft force main upside in, this is the, only the design portion for 60,000.
So my only question though, so we, is this 100% of the design cost?
Yes.
Okay, did we ask MDD for that or we just ran out, another one of these things we ran out of money on or?
Yeah, I think-
Usually we tend to do 73.
You kind of had a full boat.
Okay, I know y'all did, that's why I was-
Again, when we get the 500,000 reimbursed back, we're, I know, we'll look at, you know.
What's, what's the urgency in this one, Justin?
That's my fault, that's my next question. Can this wait till January?
Yeah, we talked about it at a previous council meeting and it was decided to let's do the design portion now and then the construction. The lift station, we need to get done, we need that pump and the control, the electrical panel. This one, we are going to need it, but not as immediately as the lift station, which is why we opted to, let's do design this year and then next year we'll move into construction. But based on the study that Blile did, this will be needed to handle the additional flows that are going to be going through that lift station and through that force main.
So if we pushed it, we'd have to basically eat it all at once instead of, instead of eating the design now.
Yeah, and that'll, that'll delay the timetable of construction.
Right, okay, so we need to do it.
That's why, all these hit high.
Is it one, is it something that can be done the first quarter of next year?
The design or, or construction?
No, well, construction's not until 2023.
Right.
The design process, can it start after the first quarter of next year?
We could.
Would it still be in this budget?
Well, we're, I think you're looking at-
Well, what I'm saying is if it's at the first quarter of next year and the loan's been funded, then it is something that can get kicked in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah, then maybe MDD can reimburse.
Put in this budget today.
I would agree with, that's something we can do, and then if MDD says, we kick too many, they run out of money again, they can come back to us and we can amend it.
Still, we'll amend it.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
But let's hold off on the 60,000.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
But we, we do need to deal with it.
Yes.
January, so don't-
Sorry.
Don't forget about it.
Yeah, don't forget about it.
Okay.
Yeah, get you some sticky notes.
I'm sure I'll dream about it. Okay.
What do you tell you about Canada and New York?
Yeah. So the next project, so this one is the Tamina Utilities Extension. MDD did not favor this project, so it's going to water sewer, it was presented to MDD.
I think until we get a clear, a little more clear guidance on what's going on with Tamina, what we do with the utilities, to me, I would put that on hold until, to me, those two things got to go together.
Based on if they are eligible for federal grant, grant money and stuff.
Well, we got federal grants to consider, we got to figure out what the county wants to do, we got to figure out our partnership with the county. There's a whole bunch of stuff going on with that that I don't see.
It's a moderate, too.
Yeah, I, I-
And these discussions are taking place.
Yeah, I, I'm aware of that.
What he said, that we need to put this one on hold.
Okay.
It will end up happening.
Yes, it will.
Right. But, uh-
There's no reason to budget for it at this point.
No problem. And then the last one is going to be the low priority for the INI testing.
That's like a below zero priority.
I know, it's still on the list, it's still on the CIP, we have to bring it.
We, we are urged as a, a treatment system to reduce INI. We're not going to get any fines for it, but we are urged to reduce INI and it does-
And we will.
And it does increase costs a bit because you are pumping more water, you're treating more water, et cetera, et cetera.
I think we did the math and we said it would take six years of what we figure we're, we're wasting to pay just for the testing, not even giving repairs.
We've got there, but it's not burning us right now.[1794.91] The payback is slow.
Well, it's, I remember I misspoke, and, and I think I said ten thousand per month, and Rich's eyes bulged, we're doing it! Wait, I mean, for a year, sorry, for a year.
For the best of the year. Yeah.
All right, so that will complete the capital project extension for water sewer. Um, and there was a note to go back to the tax rate at this point, to establish if we want to continue with the seventeen-three-seven, or if we want to put the seventeen-nine-nine back.
So the difference was how many? What was the difference?
Seventy-five thousand.
Seventy-five thousand, okay.
Well, seventy-seven total, so, um, and of course, I didn't write down. So for the general fund, it would be about twenty, twenty-three thousand, thirty-three thousand?
Can you blow that up?
Yeah.
Well, the, the tax rate difference was?
The tax rate overall would be seventy-three, but just for the general fund, because there's that split between jet service and, so seventy-three thousand's total. So forty-five percent of seventy-three, basically. Does that make sense?
No.
So taking the overall seventeen-nine-nine to seventeen-three-seven is a seventy-three thousand dollar difference, but you split that between two funds.
What two funds?
What, um, not water sewer, sorry, general fund and debt service.
Oh, debt service, I, I, okay.
Yes, M and O and I N S.
So debt service is a big chunk of this, so really, the only.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're missing out on twenty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Of you, what I'm gonna call usable money.
Yeah. Right?
I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of increasing the tax rate. I think we should keep it at the.
No new revenue rate.
No new revenue rate.
I agree, I just, I wanted to point out that this is.
Yeah.
It's twenty-three thousand dollars. We, we had a, we did a really good job of trimming this budget. We're gonna have to go into some of our available cash, take care of some capital projects and some much-needed, um, catch-up on the police pay. But it's the right thing to do.
Well, that's the reality of it. Had, had it been taken care of over the last several years, we would be sitting here flipping the bill.
Yeah. We, we, exactly. Right.
And if you look at what our deficit is in comparison to what we're catching up to the police department.
It's actually, it's actually less.
It's actually less, yeah, thirty thousand, yeah. Very good job with what we have to work on, so.
So, so where are we at then? Okay, we got, if we use the seventeen.
Oh, I forgot the transfer amount, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
I'm tired. Give me a minute.
Tired, it's only nine o'clock.
Thirty, Ted.
I've been up since five.
Okay.
We could just, just not get out of council meeting right about now.
Oh, never mind, I had to, I'm sorry. I had a, I'm sorry. So it would be the seventy-three, because you have to, you have to account for the transfer, because you're missing that money, so you have to transfer.
Put it back, okay.
Mm-hmm, I'm so sorry.
Still.
Yeah.
I'm, nothing, that doesn't actually change anything. I still think we can, we can adopt the tax rate of seventeen-three-seven, no new revenue rate, lower taxes, lower our rate, and still take care of our police, still take care of some of our major projects.
Cool.
Yeah, because there will be a day when, when there may need to be a tax rate above the known revenue rate, and so save those, you know, credits for a rainy day.
Eventually, you're, you're gonna be built out.
Eventually, you know, yeah, you're gonna have to ask the residents to make that vote, and I'd save it for when we really need it.
So.
We don't right now.
We don't.
We're not, we're not at the rate, we're not at the rate where it needs to vote.
We're not, not on this one, they don't, but eventually, right.
But we could, we could have left at seventeen-nine-nine, nobody would have voted.
Right.
It'd just been a public hearing.
Would have been a public hearing, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Well, we still have to, since we voted yesterday, I still have to have an item as a public hearing, if that makes sense.
So we'll have a public hearing that says, would you like the tax rate to stay at seventeen-three-seven?
Yeah.
Or would you like the tax rate to be lowered from seventeen-nine-nine to seventeen-three-seven? And I think most people will say yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Sure they will, yeah.
They will, but it's like Rich was saying, eventually, it's, it's not always gonna be that way.
No.
And we don't know, again, because we don't control the appraisal district, we don't know what they're gonna do next year, or two years from now, that's gonna force us, like, you know, we could control our budget very well, just like we did tonight, but it's like, I cannot control the appraisal district.
Well, and the state of Texas could do some more craziness.
And I've talked to Steve about that, and how it's like, okay, okay, it's great, it's great that you all did that at one level, but you have to control the appraisal district. All, that's all they did, though, is they kicked the can down the street.
With the tax rate.
They didn't address the problem. The problem is the appraisal district, and until you get that under control, you're not gonna.
Right.
You're not gonna address the property tax problems in Texas. You have to address appraisal district.
That's why S P two is a really, a lot of cities didn't like it because of that.
Well, yeah, well, it didn't, it, all it did was kick the can down the road. It didn't, it didn't address the problem.
Yeah. Um, just, just that, I just wanna make sure we have a consensus that we will go with seventeen-three-seven, so if each of you can just say yes, to make sure that it's a total consensus. So when the tax assessor asked me, I'd be like, yes, it was unanimous.
Can you say it again?
Yes.
Do we need, do we need to make a motion, or?
No, it's just a consensus. I can't actually vote on a tax rate until the public hearing, so it's just to say.
I'm gonna magically raise my hand if we want seventeen-three-seven.
Three-seven, yes, just to make sure, okay. So Mike, John, Rich, well, Rich, Ron, yes?
I'm gonna vote anyway.
Um.
Okay.
Okay, Charlie.
Whatever.
Okay, and then Ted.
I think it was pretty adamant about this.
Okay. Let me make sure, let me make sure, in case she asks, I'd be like, yes.
We, we ran the numbers, and the numbers came out, so otherwise, I would have said, nah, it was like, until we made it fit, I wasn't sure that it was gonna work.
We made it in reserves, make it fit, yeah. It just won't, re, rephrase it, or?
No, 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 no.
Not going into reserve.
Available cash.
No, I mean, what, reserves are, our reserves are set aside for six months.
Absolutely.
Oh, okay, you're splitting hairs now, guys.
No, no, no.
No, 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 it's a big, big difference. So what, available cash, then?
Is that what you want me to move on item nine?
We have it. Oh, yeah, you're good. Do you want me to add one?
Citizens Forum.
Okay, so, moving on to item nine, which is citizens forum. Anybody sign up to speak, did we, Courtney? Are you sure? Have a good check. Is everybody out there? Okay. Uh, we have no executive session, so with that, we will adjourn the meeting, unless anybody's got anything, going once, twice. Chris, any other software? No? Okay.
This is a record. Thanks, you guys. Thank you.